One, I will open tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board Tuesday, October 19th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. I would ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the conclusion of the meeting. If you would like to join tonight's meeting and have a computer, smartphone, or tablet, you can use the Zoom application. Tonight's webinar ID is 909-174-0347, and this is for remote participation in the public comment at the beginning and end of the meeting only. If you do not have a smart device and wish to participate in public comment by phone, you can do so by calling 888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. The posted agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at this meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Do I have any public comment this evening from the board?
Comment?
None.
Nope.
No.
None. Any public comment from the public? Seeing none. Any announcements, Town Manager?
None.
I have five announcements. They all have to do with this weekend and next weekend. So this Saturday is Homecoming Saturday, so there will be the Homecoming Parade right here in the center of town approximately 12:00 noon, followed after the parade and the floats by the football game, which will be approximately 2:00 PM. Right after the parade, Boys and Girls Club is having two events. In the afternoon, they are celebrating their 16th anniversary with a Sweet 16 Birthday Party. That is at the Boys and Girls Club property at, right here on the corner of Main Street, and that starts at 12:30, so 12:30 PM until, I think, about 2:00 or 2:30. And that evening at the Boys and Girls Club, they have their annual Shriek's and Creek's Haunted House, and that runs from 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM. There will be lots of events in the haunted house, and I think there will be refreshments and some food served as well. For Halloween next Saturday, just be aware that the Lunenburg Parks and Recreation is having their trunk or treat on Saturday, October 30th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Lunenburg High School Upper Parking Lot. I believe you have to register. Is that true? Yes, you have to register online, so look on their, their site on the Lunenburg webpage. And then just one more reminder that on Sunday, Halloween itself, October 31st, the trick-or-treat hours in town are from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Appointment 7:05 on the nose, meeting with the DPW Director regarding Share the Road signage and acceptance of a donation of a picnic table at Marshall Pond or Marshall Park?
Marshall Pond. They actually plan on placing it.
I just want to make sure that what I had was accurate.
Yep, so the Parks Commission has a generous donation of a picnic table that they're asking to accept for the town, gift to the town.
Any questions? No? I would entertain a motion regarding the request to accept the donation of the picnic table.
I move to accept the donation of a picnic table at Marshall Pond.
Second.
Well, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. So I'm also here for another donation, and with me tonight is Mr. Pete Cowley, our resident who is an avid cyclist in town and is looking to donate a number of Share the Road signs to the DPW for us to install various locations around town, basically to call awareness to the fact that vehicles share the road with cyclists and pedestrians as well, but in this case, their Share the Road signs, they feature a bicycle or a bicycle and pedestrians. I know Mr. Cowley would just like to explain why he's making this gift to the town, and so I'm actually going to ask him to come on up and say a couple words.
Hi, I'm Peter Cowley, Peninsula Drive, and thanks for having me. During my, sure, that's an example of the signs that we're proposing. I put on about 1,500 to 2,000 miles of biking per year, and also toured in various countries and including across our own country, which was a great experience, but it's given me the opportunity to see a lot of different traffic situations and ways of handling local multi-use traffic. First of all, Lunenburg has great biking roads. It's a combination of their scenic, they're relatively wide, they're relatively light traffic, and nice surfaces, and you know, for that, I'd like to give credit to the DPW. They've got, they do a great job of taking care of them. The, my experience is that most, most drivers in our area, not just Lunenburg, are very considerate, give people plenty of room. You know, as in anywhere, there's always a few that are going to go a little faster than they ought to be, cut it a little bit closer to us on the roads, and you know, I feel it would be useful to have some reminders for, you know, just, we're required to share the road. It's by law. And so Mr. Aliva has been very receptive and enthusiastic for a program to help put some reminders up in the form of signs of Share the Road that I guess you've seen now, as well as the stencils on the roads that you see in some of our neighboring communities. And my objective is also to remind bikers that they, they need to show the same courtesy and follow the rules that, and get, get the same respect that we would hope to receive from motor vehicles. So, you know, I'd like to make this small donation for the town to help keep everybody safer. It's sort of a little way of paying back for what I've experienced. So I, Rob and I have talked about locations. I've got a generated or prioritized list of places where the most heavily traveled roads, they could use both just biking signs as well as biking and plus pedestrian signs. And I view it as an ongoing program, hopefully starting next spring. So.
What are those locations, if I may ask? Like where are some of the locations that you're looking at?
Oh, let's see. That was, that was a page on the bottom here. There, let's see. Well, Norfield Road would be a priority. The Reservoir Road and Arbor Street Corridor is, is pretty heavily used by both pedestrians and bikes. There's, there's also, there tend to be road routes that go through town that, that also could use them. Let's see, one that comes to mind is Malpus. It's, it's a beautiful road. It's got some windy curves on it. So I'd like to just remind people that, you know, okay, there could be others on the road besides them having fun on a nice curvy road. Let's see, some of the others, it, it's on there. Townsend Harbor, you know, parts of Route 2A. I don't know how much we can actually do with that. Lemonsor Road, Highland Road is a, another one, another one over at Sunset in the Robbs Hill area. Goodrich is a real nice road as well. And Goodrich in particularly has some, has some curves on it that I think people could use a reminder.
Would these be put on existing poles or these would be on their own?
No, we would do new, new poles. So, you know, the DPW would, would provide the hardware and the labor to put the signs up. I think Mr. Cowley's guidance is great in terms of the experience of biking, and I asked him to come up with some locations when we first started talking about this. So he's been a pretty good resource on this, far more knowledgeable than I would be on the matter. So I'm, I'm very excited about, you know, getting them out there, and I know people do bike, so I think it's great to kind of call attention to the fact that we have bikes on the road. And when we do, we have a local paint contractor, striping contractor, I know has done crosswalks and stuff in the past. I would plan on using someone like him to paint the bike stencils in some locations. So it's, overall, I think it's, it's a win for the town.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great idea, and I think anything that brings awareness to the fact that there are other people other than motor vehicles on the road is a good idea.
I'm, just add, I'm not looking to plaster every, every road with signs, but you know, to use it judicious, judiciously, so you know, people actually do pay attention to them instead of just seeing, oh, there's another one.
Well, according to this, you have 19 signs. According to this list, is that accurate?
Yes, that's, that's our.
I would think that would be hardly plastering.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Moreno?
Pete and I have had conversations in the past about this subject, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to help him at the time. And I guess this leads me to my question. Did you already purchase the signs or?
No.
No?
No.
What kind of money is it going to cost you to?
I'm looking at about 1,500.
So are you, do you not have any money in your budget to cover some of that? Or, he's, this man has been very passionate about this, and I tried to help him in the past, and unfortunately, we just didn't have the money at the time. It's okay.
I mean, Mr. Cowley has come to me with this, and we've discussed it at length. I, the town is contributing in terms of the hardware and the labor to install them, which I think is reasonable. I do, I agree, it's a generous gift, and I know Mr. Cowley must be committed, considering the amount.
I may end up taking some donations from some of my biking friends. I, I feel it's just a way of, you know, paying back. I've spent a lot of hours on roads in town and have enjoyed it. It's, it's been a nice place to live, nice place to raise my children, and this is, you know, one little contribution I can make.
I, for one, really appreciate it. I'm sorry that, you know, we're at this point where you're paying for that. We should, we should have did that, but.
Not, not at all. No, that's, that's okay. But, you know, we're getting the ball rolling, and I think that's, that's the important part here.
Yeah, well, you know, I think the least the town should do for you, this is how optimistic I am, is to buy you an updated sweatshirt in about three weeks.
This, this actually was my dad's. He was born in 1916. He liked to bring attention to the fact that he was alive for the 1918 World Series win as well as the 2004. Not too many people could make that claim.
No.
After he passed away, I, there's no way I could, I could pass this up. And sorry for the appearance, but I was wearing this when they beat the Yankees, and I can't wash it until.
I'm sure your dad really partied hard after that 1918 win at 2 years old.
I have a couple of questions. So first, I think this is a really great idea, but as far as the problem that we're trying to address, how many bicycle vehicle-related incidents, accidents, do you know, have there been in town in the last year, two years, three years?
I don't know of any, thankfully.
Okay.
There has been a couple, but it's not a serious problem. It's the nemesis that we, we get a lot of.
Yeah.
I'm looking at prevention more than anything. I certainly haven't heard of any serious incidents, you know, with a motor vehicle.
Okay. And of the locations, there's 19, just so I'm reading this correctly, there's 19 locations for signage. Well, let me re, this, key, as you, we look at this, can you help me read what I'm reading? Look at, help me translate what I'm reading. It says Priority 17, Priority 232, Priority 37. And then there's, so, and then there, it's a note of about 62 stencils. So how many signs exactly are you looking to install and how many stencils? 62 stencils?
One, one stencil, because it's reusable. It's a heavy-duty poly.
I understand, I mean, how many places on the road would be painted with the stencil?
I'm, I'm thinking typically on some of these roads, typically just before some, some of the curves coming from both directions.
Okay. I, I guess I'm asking how many, how many places will there be this stencil on the, on the road in town?
Maybe I should answer this. At this point, we don't have a final, we don't have a final plan on all the locations. Some locations maybe we go out and look and decide there may be multiple, you know, stencil marks at a location. If, if he's got 62 there now, I mean, that could be a goal and moving forward. I don't think I'll get to 62 kind of next spring or next summer, so it'll be, you know, phased in over a period of time, but we may come up with more locations. We may find that it's wildly popular and people love it, and it's a great idea, and we do more. But that's just a kind of a, a quick take to start. Granted, we're not going to do it all at once.
Yeah.
The signs, for the most part, will get up as, as quickly as we can, but I think the stencils will take a little bit longer.
Okay. I'm in support of the concept. I, I would like to know where they're going to be at around the town. I mean, or, you know, the quantity of signage, the quantity of stenciling. I think it's going to be helpful to raise awareness about, you know, the, I understand everything you're saying. I'm just trying to understand, you know, what the, how this is going to transform the look of roadways and across town, and if we're addressing, if this is solving a problem.
If I can use an example, my thought on, say, Reservoir Road would be one sign pretty much at either end, you know, one in each direction, and then one, possibly two stencils near the curves in the road, sort of, you know, the ones somewhat in the middle.
Okay.
We can, I mean, we can certainly, over the winter, before we start, I can come up with a plan and show the locations and through Town Manager, get that to you.
Great.
That's fine. I would do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I haven't specified any locations with Rob.
And I'm fully planning on working with Mr. Cowley on that, so we'll bring that to you.
Okay.
If I may, what is your concern about either of those, about the signs or the stencils? I'm, I'm not understanding your concern.
I don't know if it's a concern. I mean, I'm not, I think that my question is where are they going to be at? I mean, I think the question before us is to approve this, but there's no specific plan in front of us. So we're approving a concept, and so I'm asking for specifications of that concept.
And again, I will gladly draft up a plan and, and provide that.
Yep.
We're actually, you know, we haven't purchased the signs yet. I wanted to get through this process and get it approved, get signs purchased and delivered. I don't know how long, I don't know what the delivery time is on these yet either. So, and then I was going to work with Mr. Aliva to actually specify locations.
Okay. Yeah, then, I'm, I'm in favor. I don't want to sound like I'm skeptical. You know, working in Cambridge, I think they put these about every 15 feet.
I, I actually agree that some, some places seem to overdo it.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, that's why I use the term judiciously, judiciously placed. That, you know, I, I certainly, I wouldn't want to see them, you know, every, every half-mile, for example. I, I think some of the ones in, some of the areas that, you know, people could just use some reminders and where the visibility might be, might be an issue. I mean, if you, if you see some of the bikers going through town and they're wearing those funny-looking outfits that, with the ugly colors, I mean, the main, the main objective there is just to be visible. That's why so many people are using blinker, blinking lights on their bikes now, too. So again, there's, you know, just something that, you know, maybe, as I'm driving along, for example, I see something in the road, I just sort of say, oh, okay. You know, maybe, maybe it'll make a difference.
Yeah, the signs about turtles, I think, have made me more mindful, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, it seems to me like you're completely conscious of, of the idea of not overdoing it. There's a concept in tort law called warnings pollution. When you provide so many warnings, there are no warnings at all.
Exactly.
Exactly. So, you know, you said, exactly. People will say, oh, there's another one. They won't, you're conscious of the issue. So it seems like it will be totally judicious to me.
Anything else? I would entertain a motion regarding the acceptance of the Share the Road signage as presented.
I'll motion to accept.
For a second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you very much, and thank you much for your, for a very generous donation.
Thank you all for your attention. Thanks for some good questions.
All right. Go Sox.
Thank you.
Go Sox.
Okay. I'll talk slowly. I can introduce the next thing and be on time for 7:25. So the next up, we have interviews regarding the Landscape Design Services for 30 School Street, also known as the old primary property. And we had three, three people submit applications or submissions for the RFP that we will be interviewing. And first up is Wright-Ostermeyer Landscape Architects, professionally known as WOLA, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Where would you like us to sit here?
You're going to stand at the podium and present, because that's the microphone.
Okay, perfect.
So.
Yes, we have a third team member that would also like to give this a zoom. I don't look back at all.
Oh, sure. Is she the O in WOLA?
That's right.
All right, see? Welcome.
Thank you.
So I'll let whoever is doing the lead introduce themselves and the team, and then I guess we'll get right into it. So just however you want to present what your thesis, you know, and we've left time for us to ask questions as well, but we've given you a time of introduction. And whatever presentation, as long as it doesn't go beyond 15 minutes, that gives us 15 minutes for questions.
Yes, we sent, we sent a PDF presentation that hopefully you'll be able to see on the screen.
Yes, and I think Catherine was gonna.
Ah, okay.
Oh, Lily, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. While Catherine's getting that set up, we'll just introduce ourselves. Thank you so much for having us this evening. We're, we're happy to be here for this interview, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to be considered for the School Street Project. My name is Emily Wright. I'm a landscape architect and principal at Wright-Ostermeyer Landscape Architects. We go by WOLA for short. We're also joined with, by Catherine Ostermeyer. She's joining us remotely. She's also a principal and landscape architect. And we also have Nick Betts.
My name's Nicholas Betts. I'm with Meridian Engineers. We've teamed up, teamed up with WOLA. I'm also a landscape architect and.
You can, you, I'm gonna, this is not me being particular. I want people at home to listen, and the mic, at least get semi-close to the mic.
Sure.
Speak loud so people can hear us, not.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself again.
All right. My name's Nicholas Betts. I'm also a landscape architect. I'm with Meridian Associates. We're teaming up with WOLA. Meridian Associates is a civil engineering firm. I also do a lot of civil engineering-related work.
So we want to give you a brief overview of our, of our firm, tell you a little bit about ourselves, introduce you to the different roles of our project team and how we plan to approach your project, and then we're happy to take questions, any questions that you might have. So our firm is three years old. We're a relatively new firm. However, we started working together, Catherine and I, about 12 years ago. We met in graduate school at UMass. That's actually where we met Nick as well, so we've all known each other and worked together for a long time. Catherine and I decided to start our own firm because we wanted to have a work culture and approach to projects that really reflects our values. And we wanted to talk about those because they really influence our projects and how we communicate with, with clients. At our core, we're optimists. All of the projects that we approach have pretty significant constraints, and sometimes those can seem overwhelming, but we've gotten really good at finding the opportunities in every, every project. And part of that process is, is really digging into the context and the history and the people involved with the projects. So we spend a lot of time getting to know a site, understanding its history, how people use it. And we also prioritize listening to our clients, understanding what's important, what the main issues are, understanding what the time and resource constraints are are really important, and we put those, we put those first. A little bit more about WOLA. As a firm, combined, we have over 20 years of experience. We are fully insured. We're a certified woman-owned business. We have two offices, one in North Hampton, Mass., and one in Watertown, so Lunenburg is conveniently right in the middle of both of those locations. And we both have experience working across New England. Our design approach, as I had previously mentioned, of site analysis is really important to us. We like to understand, you know, everything from the history to the ecological processes on a site. We like to come up with imaginative design solutions for, for our clients' problems. We feel like the site constraints are often how we get to be the most creative. We don't apply a cookie-cutter approach to our, our projects. Every place is unique. We try to engage with our clients and with the users of sites so that we fully understand the issues involved and, and also the vision that people have for the, the future of a given site. Some of our recent project experience that we feel like is, is relevant to your project, we've worked with the city of Springfield on a couple of parks and open space projects recently. We've done some planning projects for Sudbury and for the town of North Hampton, and an athletics study for Mount Montezuma Community College. Additionally, we've been working with the Montezuma Opportunity Council in Fitchburg. They're now making Opportunity Count. We have a couple of projects with them. We've also been doing some work for Smith College, Amherst College, the Bement School, and Girls of the Ink, Girls Inc. of the Valley. And to introduce you to our project team, WOLA will be taking on the leadership role in, in our team. We will be providing management for the project, design, coordinating with, with the consultants for the project. I will be acting as principal in charge. Catherine will be the primary point person, the project manager. Additionally, we're relying on experts for civil engineering and. relying on experts for, uh, civil engineering and, um, um, cost estimating services. And, um, we've brought in a civil engineering consultant and cost estimating services because we can do some of those things, but we feel like we'll deliver a better design package if we have the expertise of a thirty-person civil engineering office, um, and an office that specializes in cost estimates for construction projects just like this. Um, so a lot of expertise behind this group of, of folks that you're seeing. And, um, we'll dive into a little bit more detail about what each person brings to the table that's relevant to your, your project. Um, so my background is primarily in higher education, municipal projects, um, institutional projects, and custom residential projects. Um, I'm licensed in Massachusetts and have been for a while now. Um, some of the examples of my work that you're looking at here include, um, a park project in West Springfield, a playground project in Lexington, Kentucky, um, a streetscape improvement project at Turner's Falls, Massachusetts, and, um, a campus, um, planning and implementation project at, uh, Providence College. Catherine Ostermeyer would be your, uh, project manager and your main point person. She's also licensed in Massachusetts, and her experience extends from, uh, residential projects, municipal projects, and institutional projects. Um, some of the examples of her work are shown here, including institutional and residential projects. And one of Catherine's, uh, one of the things that Catherine is really great at is, is public engagement, um, and that's shown here, um, at a charrette we did in Sudbury. Uh, Catherine will oversee and undertake site analysis, um, manage town community meetings, um, and oversee graphic design production. Um, she's also, she would also be responsible for coordinating directly with you and with our consultants. And now I'll turn it over to Nick, and he'll introduce, um, himself and talk a little bit about his firm's experience.
Sure. Uh, so first, I'm gonna introduce signings who couldn't be here tonight, but he is, uh, vice president, Meridian Engineers, uh, Meridian Associates, sorry. Um, he's licensed in Massachusetts. He's been doing this for a very long time. He's the head of our municipal, um, department. He handles all these types of, of contracts and work. Uh, the project that you're seeing on the screen is actually right down the street. That's the Thomas Passio School. We were paired with, uh, DeGiorgio Associates, uh, DeGiorgio Architects, um, as their civil to do a site evaluation for ADA accessibility, uh, overall circulation of the site, and potential reuse for that, uh, building. Myself on the next slide here. I've been doing this for a while myself. I have ten years' experience. I'm also licensed in Massachusetts as a landscape architect, working towards getting my PE. Uh, this project on here is actually, uh, the Elway Stormwater Wetland in Cambridge. It was a fourteen-acre site that was basically nothing, and as part of a combined sewer overflow project, they turned it into a park with, uh, uh, bike lanes, amphitheaters, a stabilized aggregate path, boardwalks, overlooks, and that actually treats a lot of the stormwater runoff from some of the abutting neighborhoods in the Cambridge, uh, Huron neighborhoods. Uh, it's a very fascinating project with lots of green infrastructure techniques, sustainability built into it, um, and, and techniques that I think would, would do well at this park in Lunenburg.
Um, hi, everyone. Uh, can you hear and see me alright right now?
Yes, and yes.
Okay, great. So I'm Catherine Ostermeyer. I'm happy to be here tonight with the team. Um, I'm gonna walk you through our approach to this project and share with you some images and projects that we've done in the past that we thought, um, would be helpful in understanding our approach and what it would be like to work with WOLA for this project. Uh, our first step is always a kickoff meeting and thorough site analysis. So after an initial meeting with the administrative contacts and the select board and stakeholders, um, to understand their perspective and goals for the project, we'll undertake a thorough site analysis of the property over at Thirty School Street. Um, we're happy to have Meridian on board with us, and we'll be working with them to understand all of the opportunities and constraints of the site, um, drawing on their expertise, as Nick said, with stormwater utilities and also the ability to pick up any necessary topographic information. I wanted to share with you a slide of a project we recently completed. This was for the city of Northampton, Massachusetts. We did a river swim study focusing on formal and informal river swimming in the Northampton area. Um, they wanted to understand where people were going and to, um, begin to think about any possible improvements to these areas. Um, this, here is an example of our initial base map. Um, we have found that a clear graphic presentation ensures that stakeholders and community members are oriented to the spatial layout of the site. So everyone has a good baseline of information because they all come with so many, um, different perspectives. Uh, here we provided the basic overall site plan with photos, and these photos allow community members to orient themselves to the plan. Sometimes we think of, oh, that's where that view is from, and it allows them to start putting together the, um, spaces of the site. We also provided information, um, as an overlay of the existing land use and zoning, and this gives everyone, um, some additional inform, information on what's surrounding the areas of interest. We also provided information on the existing wetland. And as you can imagine, along the Connecticut River, um, in the Barrett Brook, we have wetlands, we have riverfront areas, and up at this red dot, we also have the existing swimming areas. So this is, you know, providing that baseline of information with clear graphic overlays, which are easy to understand and prevent, or pardon me, present a sense of a cohesive process and, uh, presentation to the viewers. The next step in this process, once we've completed the site analysis, is to present this information to the town and to the select board, as well as community members and stakeholders. And that would be at a community meeting. Um, in twenty nineteen, the town of Sudbury purchased a historic farm which totaled about thirty-two acres. And in addition, they wanted to understand how they might use this property. So they engaged with WOLA to undertake a community design charrette, um, similar to what you all are doing in Lunenburg, um, doing community meeting, site analysis, and then coming up with some concept design alternatives for the select board to consider as they moved forward. Um, we put together an evening program where we presented our site analysis, and we also created a series of activities to really engage with the community. And we worked closely with the town to develop these activities so that we accurately represented them and made sure that we were getting information that they would find helpful. Um, the first step, as people entered the charrette, was to welcome them with a where do you, where do you live, um, board. And they were invited to place pins on a large blown-up map of where they lived, so that we were gathering, uh, some demographic data right off the bat of where people lived in relation to Broadacre's Farm. Um, we also created a series of activity stickers. Um, and this is so that we could understand what sort of activities the town wanted to undertake, and it also gave us some spatial information. So what activities do you want to do and where do you want to do those activities? So that we could begin to understand, oh, people want to see, um, livestock down in this pasture down here, or, oh, people really want a walking trail up to the north. And so that gave us some additional information to inform our ultimate concept designs. It also, um, made it a little bit fun, which I think is really important for community engagement. You know, we do ask questions and we invite people to speak up, um, at the outset, but this is also a great opportunity for people who might not feel comfortable public speaking to go around and still have their voice heard and, um, lend their input to the process of shaping the town or the public space around them. It's also important to understand the aesthetic preferences of a community. Um, for Sudbury, we actually developed a voting bean exercise with photos of different styles of amenity. So for example, here we have walking path preferences. Perhaps they prefer, uh, a very broad concrete path or a more narrow asphalt path, or something a little more informal. Um, this way, the community was able to walk around to different stations and drop their voting beans in the jars of their aesthetic preference. Um, in this way, um, we were able to gather information on how the ultimate concept might work. And we actually, uh, created a ranked voting system with different types of beans. You could use a lima bean, a red bean, or a black-eyed pea. And that way, in addition to understanding, uh, general preference, we also were able to account for first preference, second preference, and third preference. Um, this ultimately informed our concept design, and we discovered that the people of Sudbury tended to prefer a nature playground. Um, they liked a more rustic architecture-style bench, and they preferred a pine needle walking path as opposed to like a wider asphalt pathway. So once we've gone through our, um, community meeting, um, we move on to the concept design. And this is, again, where we would reconvene with Meridian Associates and begin developing a concept based on the information we've gathered from the community and also from the select board and town stakeholders. Um, in Lunenburg, we're also fortunate to have some preliminary work that was done by the Montechusa Vocational Technical School. So it's always nice to have a starting point and a common frame of reference. Um, in this case, um, we're looking at a preliminary concept we developed for the Northampton Swim Project. And this is along the Connecticut River Greenway. And we had started to think about a wayfinding plan and where the larger gateway signs might be, as well as where swimming and voting guidelines may be, and what those signs could look, look like. So this is starting to give the town, uh, or city an understanding of what their, what their options are and what the, um, possibilities may be. Um, for Broadacre's Farm, we developed at, in Sudbury, we developed some initial concepts which we reviewed, um, with the planning and, uh, town stakeholders. And so what we came up with were a couple of alternatives. The first was sort of maximum intervention. And this is where we include everything. We've got a recreation field, multifamily housing, um, light agriculture, a picnic pavilion, a picnic area, a playground, a splash pad. It's all in here. And we've created a general legend and layout so that the town is able to understand, um, the spatial layout and how we can incorporate those amenities. And we thought, you know, some of the, um, wish lists and, uh, vocational tech, uh, concept designs have some similar, um, site amenities in their, in their programmatic approach as well. And then, we also gave them a minimal intervention. And this is where maybe we do less. It's a lighter touch. We include walking paths. There's still space for a playground to be relocated, to be located, as well as some picnic areas. We've got space for parking, and we've found a way to reuse some of the existing buildings. So a more minimal touch. After we presented these concept alternatives to the select board and to the planning and environmental staff, we got their feedback, and we created a final concept design which incorporated their input. So we, in the end, had sort of a nice, large, um, field with picnic areas. Um, we have a playground over here, as well as parking with some multifamily housing, and we've retained some of their, um, sort of historical agricultural space so that you still feel the character of Broadacre's Farm. I know that, you know, ADA accessibility is important to Lunenburg and to all of us. Um, I wanted to share a couple of projects that we've recently completed. The first is at Amherst College, and this, um, involved ADA improvements to provide access from their, really their heart of the campus, the central area where they have their convocation and their commencement, um, over to the library, which is sort of just out of the frame across this crosswalk here. And we, it's an Olmstedian landscape on their central quad. And what we did is we carefully designed, uh, the topography and replaced the stairs so that the approach to the library is along a gentle walkway, which is integrated into the existing campus fabric, uh, being sensitive to the history and honoring the original vision, um, of the campus.
Catherine, before, before you continue, I wanna, I wanna make sure, I wanna be cognizant of the time. It is not my intent to be rude, but I want to leave some time from the board to ask questions.
I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Well, why don't I just flip through these quickly and we'll wrap it up?
Sure.
Uh, Smith College Washburn House. We did three concept designs to improve ADA accessibility, um, at a renovated dormitory. Colony Hills Terrace, another Olmstedian landscape in a Springfield neighborhood. We created some visualizations so that the community could understand proposed improvements. And Mitneak Park, um, which Emily worked on, and is, um, includes ADA gardening areas, as well as picnic and an outdoor pavilion. And thank you. We are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. So I would, uh, open it up if, if somebody wants a closing remark. Otherwise, I'll open it up to the board.
Absolutely. Questions?
Sure. So I'll open it up to the board if anybody has any questions. I have a question. So first of all.
I don't know if that our mic is.
What would you, it, it, you won't hear. It's really for, for broadcast.
Oh, okay, great. Perfect.
Um, can you say a little bit, after reading our RFP, what you understand about the project? And, and, and did you do a site visit? And if so, what is your impression of what the town is looking for?
Sure. I will, I will touch on this briefly, and then I'll allow Catherine to, to elaborate.
Yeah.
We, Nick and I stopped by the site earlier this evening and took a look. Um, and it's our understanding that, um, the town has sort of been grappling with a number of, for a number of years, of what to do with the school, whether or not to demolish it or not, um, and how to mess, best make use of this, this property. And after walking around, we can understand that, you know, there's some complexities to the site. There's some driveways that are shared. Um, there's some topography changes that, that definitely complicate things. Uh, but you're, the program that you're proposing in the, in the RFP is really interesting, and I think this could be a great opportunity to bring people to what feels like now a currently underutilized site. Um, but Catherine, I'm sure has lots more to say about that as well.
Hi, everyone. Um, so yes, so in terms of thinking about your priorities for the site, my understanding, um, is that you're looking to add parking, um, to address a deficit of parking in the area, and that you'd also like, um, more of a passive recreational space, um, which includes opportunities for a farmer's market. And I noticed in the vocational tech renderings, they have structures sort of overhead. So that you're, you're looking for something like that, um, a playground, as well as generally a place for the community to gather. My thoughts are that it sounds like you really want a flexible space. And, um, I've done some thinking also about the existing primary school and demolition. Um, I sort of took a brief look through the property condition assessment and looked at the photos of sort of some of the, you know, the brick and the interiors. Um, so I think there's an interesting way to provide these amenities that you're looking for. So not a formal park. Uh, well, a formal park, but, you know, not, um, like a big water park or anything, but just more of a community gathering space that allows the community to use it in flexible ways throughout the year. Um, I think it's also important to incorporate, um, parts of the primary school. And whether that's through some materials or footprints, thinking creatively about that, um, I think it could be a really special space.
Thank you.
Is that?
That's good. That's.
Okay.
I'm not grading the answers. I'm just.
Sorry, I can't see you, so I'm just not sure.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. I, I realize that you, you can't see us here, so.
That's the general understanding, is that, um, that's what you're looking for. Not overly programmed, but flexible. And I think that makes sense.
Sure. So, so talk to me about WOLA's approach between, or the balance between the artistic part of your work and the engineer. of your work and the engineering part of your work that has more constraints about, you know, maybe structural or environmental, or you said there were sloping changes, everything. How do you balance those in your projects that you're looking at?
So, let's see here. In terms of the design, the artistic and the engineering, I think that's actually, that's, to me, what design is, is balancing the aesthetics and drawing people in, while also being able to undertake the engineering and the critical problem solving that makes it a successful design. That's the form and the function. And, you know, with WOLA, we've worked on, you know, sort of custom residential projects, but we also do work with making opportunity count, taking care of Head Start preschool programs. And so, being creative with materials, being thoughtful with our layout, and making sure that our accessibility works, so that everybody can get there. And also involving engineers like Meridian, who bring things to the table that we might not. We're committed to forward-thinking stormwater management. And with Nick's experience over in Cambridge, that's a great way to start thinking about how we can work with the topography over at 30 School Street and, you know, do forward-thinking work for Lunenburg.
Thank you.
I would just add to that, that we really carefully select engineers to work with because we like to be collaborating from the very beginning. You know, we don't want to come up with an artful design and then just pass it on and say, "Okay, now you have to figure out how to make this work." We try to partner with engineers that understand our process and like to collaborate from the very beginning. So any sort of big idea that we come up with can be supported in reality.
So my last question, oh, I'm sorry, do you have something?
I was gonna just add to that. As a landscape architect working for a number of engineers, that overlap is critical to have from the very beginning. Engineers, as you all know, are very analytical, very calculated. It works like this, I don't want to change it. Landscape architects are very artistic. What if we tried this? And if you have somebody like myself that can talk both languages, that's where you really get the best type of design and outcome, because you have an understanding from both perspectives.
So last question from me is from all of you. If you had to say in two sentences, you know, maybe possibly three, quickly, what would make you stronger in this project than anybody else who is applying? What are your major strengths?
I think our major strengths are that we're really, really good at listening and pulling information from community stakeholders. We're great at getting a vision that really supports what people want, and then putting that on paper so that people can really see it and understand it.
Do I also get three sentences? I would say, just being able to communicate the idea clearly and effectively, from both an engineering and landscape architecture perspective, is always helpful. It helps the community understand, it helps the contractors understand, it helps any stakeholder understand what exactly we're proposing. And I think between the two of us, you kind of get two different LA perspectives. And the engineering perspective, you're gonna get a better end product, because it's more comprehensive.
Excellent. And Catherine?
So Emily touched on the meaningful listening and engagement, which is important. It's not sort of lip service, it's at the core of what we do. But I would say that we are also imaginative with the way that we take what we've got and make something great with it. We're creative and clever with our resources, and we're respectful of our clients' resources. And I think that to make a project happen, you've got to have everything on board so that it can move forward. And we're really good at that.
Excellent.
Hey, good evening. I have a follow-up question. This is related to the project experience that's in our, in the pack that was provided to us. So for municipal experience, there's notes about Northampton, Springfield Park improvements, the discussion on Broad Acres, and then also Turner Falls. Turner Falls is listed as 2013. Was that a typo? You guys said you guys are only around for three years.
No, that's 2013, so that was work that I had done with a previous firm.
Okay.
Yeah, so I was project manager and lead designer for that project for a previous firm.
Okay.
And I do want to note, it is in the comments down at the sort of bottom of that spreadsheet, so that we were sure to acknowledge where the work was done.
Got it. And then there's the work at Northampton and Springfield, it says it's expected 2021. Is that currently in process right now?
That's currently in process right now. The projects in Springfield are under construction. I do believe Angelina Park actually just wrapped up. We need to go do a punch list. And then the Northampton Swim Study, we're in the process of wrapping that study up now as well. We just had our last public forum last week.
Okay. And are there any concerns about the timelines? I think that we're trying to target here, being the spring.
I can speak to that. There are not. We think it's reasonable. I've done some sort of preliminary planning to make sure that it is feasible. And I think that if, you know, the contract is awarded within the next week or two, moving forward with an initial kickoff shortly thereafter, and then site analysis with a community meeting in late November, the initial community meeting, and then design through December, another community meeting in mid-January, and then wrapping it up after that within about a month, probably less. It's feasible, and we have the staff to undertake it.
And are there, I know that the two of you have been here today to present yourselves, but do you have, are there more associates within the firm?
Yes, we have an employee that helps us with production of graphics and things like that. She would probably, well, she would definitely also be assisting us with public meetings and gathering feedback, and also visiting the site and site analysis. And then Nick's company...
Yeah, we have, it's a company of 30 people. There's probably six professional engineers right now, and then a staff of support to help with everything from due diligence research, all the way through drafting plans, concepts, anything they need. So we're really just an assistance role to WOLA, and we have plenty of resources.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Catherine already touched on it, but on the possibility that aspects of that primary school may be retained, you know, a footprint, a shell, something along those lines. I did not go to your website. Do you have any examples of similar work? Have you done, have you incorporated similar structures into your work?
That's a great question.
Yeah. Incorporated, you know, I think in, at the conceptual level, we did in Sudbury. I don't know that we have, in terms of our built projects. Emily?
For, I've not repurposed an entire building for a project before. I do know that for the Turner's Falls Streetscape project, there were a number of really large pieces of granite that had been raised planters. And we found ways of utilizing those as seating. We modify the, accessibility was a significant part of that project, so we had to modify things pretty significantly. But we did try to reuse those large pieces of granite whenever possible.
Okay. Yeah, the idea wasn't to put you on the spot at all. I just didn't know if, I didn't know if there were any, and certainly you'll see new things as you go along, but I just didn't know if you had any readily available samples of having done such a thing, so.
It's a somewhat unique characteristic of a site to have an existing building on it that you, I can multi-purpose this foundation, so it'll be interesting for sure.
Mr. Dwyer?
No questions.
Mr. Meridian? Look at that, right on time. I want to thank you, Emily and Nick, for being here in person, and Catherine for joining us remote from Hawaii. Let's say it's Hawaii, why not? But thank you all for your presentation and your...
Wouldn't that be nice?
Well, since you're remote, we could say anything, right? So, but I appreciate your input and your responses and your time here this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bye.
Please. I didn't know if you were here.
Oh, yes. Hello?
Okay, so, let me introduce you. So our second interview in this is Ray Donnetz, Landscape Architecture. And if you and your team, if you're here alone, please come to the podiums, because we can use the microphone.
Okay.
So it's for people at home till here.
I wish I was remote in Hawaii, but...
If you were remote, I would say you were in Hawaii. So have you introduced yourself?
Sure.
Yeah, we're trying to do the same thing for everybody, so like up to a 15-minute presentation that you can start with.
Yeah, mine is quick and dirty, and I leave the questions to me. I'm Ray Donnetz, landscape architect in Boston. I am familiar with this area. A mentor of mine's son has a balancing company in Lunenburg. They balance giant rocket engines and stuff like that, turbines and whatnot. So we've been out here. And we do a lot of work in Fitchburg and Worcester, so a lot of public projects. So I can, if you'd like...
I have it up, and Joseph Pack can, it's behind...
You can angle yourself if you want. I mean, you can angle it.
Pack has it on the screen as well.
Yeah, I need the cues.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I understand.
Okay. So with that, I'll start my presentation. Who we are, Ray Donnetz Landscape Architecture, we've been around since 2002. Seventy-five to eighty percent of our work is public, municipal work. We do a lot of work with Massachusetts towns and cities, parks, playgrounds, master plans, athletic fields, cemeteries. But I've been a landscape architect for 35 years. I was the president of the Boston Society of Landscape Architects for several years. And we're thrilled to have the opportunity to talk to you. Our firm prides itself on community engagement. We're great listeners. We like to collaborate with our communities. That back and forth always leads to the most loved, well-loved designs and parks. And we consider ourselves great communicators. We're a somewhat small firm, we have seven people. I'm the principal, but I'm also going to be your prime contact. You won't have a junior landscape architect or project manager. You'll always be contacting me 24/7, available. And I will be leading the charge. All my folks will be in the background. We're also sustainability experts, very interested in green infrastructure, and how we can promote climate resiliency through landscape interventions. And lastly, we're passionate about what we do. Next, please. So, we've had an opportunity to visit the site, the 2.4-acre site. We are working with two firms that have already worked on this project, Vertex Engineering, who did the building assessment, and PMC, cost estimators, who also worked on the estimates. I think it's going to be important to establish a budget. You, as a Select Board, are very interested in that. And our job as designers is to maintain that budget. But we have PMC, who's got all the back experience at Vertex, to know what to do with that building. Next, please. Your RFP was very clear on the scope items. You're looking to make this a flexible space for farmer's markets, possibly some types of shade structure, bandstand, gazebo. We have done many projects similar. In fact, I have a very similar project to your project that I'd like to show you a little bit later. Next, please. Also, identity is important with identifying this site, drawing people in to the town for a sense of pride when this becomes a park. Right now, currently, the, you know, there is quite an opportunity for some type of gateway into this park to celebrate the park space. Currently, it does not exist. Next, please. You know, the community's voice is extremely important in us, helping us generate ideas. We don't live here. However, we have the ability to provide or facilitate conversation with all community members, whether it be in-person meetings or Zoom meetings, or in some situations right now with some towns we're working with, like Waymouth, we're doing hybrids, where we have an in, you know, in-house meeting with breakouts, breakout tables, so that we can get everybody's opinion and share everybody's voice. Next, please. We want to make this a special place. The concept of placemaking is one we're very familiar with and have a lot of expertise in making this something special, whether it be a natural play area, farmer's market, band shelter, a place for concerts. And I am a musician as well on the side, so music is very important to me. Next, please. I talked a little bit about green infrastructure and nature-based solutions. We want to drain things in a sustainable way, not tax, you know, public infrastructure. This is an inexpensive way that helps the planet, allowing water to infiltrate into the ground rather than running off. Next, please. Here's another graphic of how nature-based solutions work. We can make man-made wetlands to collect water. They're very beautiful, collect, we can collect birds and bees and create pollinator gardens and that kind of thing, which I think are interesting for children, as well as helping the environment. Next, please. Once again, you're our primary focus, I'll be your main contact as principal in charge. And Vertex, PMC will work behind the scenes with, for the engineering aspects of the job. Vertex is a very large engineering firm, as you know, and they have all sorts of experts in contaminated buildings. And PMC, we're starting from a base point where they've already done a lot of the cost estimating. We'll need to update those cost estimates to 2021 numbers, 2022 numbers, which they have the ability to do. Next, please. So, a little bit about our process. We listen to the community to define what the issues are, what their hopes and dreams are. We like to call it blue-sky thinking. Then we'll inspire them with design, prepare these green infrastructure solutions, and we like to test our concepts internally to make sure that they'll work well, and then produce a final design. Next, please. These are some of all the concepts that go into our park master planning work, including collecting input, designing, placemaking, learning about, I'm very interested in history. We do a lot of historic preservation work, what types of recreation we want, sustainability, green infrastructure, and healthy soil. Next, please. So I just want to share one case study of a similar project that we did in my neck of the woods, Jamaica Plain. There was an old Victorian house located on Jamaica Pond that was historic. Next, please. Next slide, please. The site was actually 2.3 acres, yours is 2.4. Next. And over the years, the house became used for things that we don't like to have our public spaces used for, became dilapidated. The city of Boston was not really able to figure out a programmed element for this building. The community wanted to save the building, obviously, because it was a beautiful, historic house. But ultimately, the decision was made to demolish the building and make a park there. But ultimately, the decision was made to demolish the building and make a park there. Next, please. So we made the connection with history to create an outline of this house that was once there with granite blocks that showed the outline and commemorates some of the important dates of, historic dates of this area. Jamaica Pond was used to, for ice making, and it was a big ice harvesting pond. So we have a lot of open space which can be used in flexible manner, historic interpretive signage. And next, please. And it shows how this space can be used, yoga in the park, concerts, interpretive signage, and historic signs, because this is a historic site. Next, please. So at the end of the day, you know, this is all about Lunenburg. Your community is important to help us understand the needs of the town. And we'll work through facilitating and helping them generate ideas of what they might see. Obviously, you've come up with some and we'll test them out, see how folks like them. Through a process of two or three community meetings, we will collect all that information, try to boil it down into some alternative designs, get the community's feedback, and obviously the select board and the town manager's feedback on direction. We like to also integrate the other agencies in town, public, I don't know, different towns call them different things, but Public Works, Parks Department. We like to get everybody's feedback, interview them. And then at the end of the day, synthesize all those comments and feedback into a final design with input from our engineer. If we're going to incorporate green infrastructure, additional parking. And then have PMC prepare a budgetary estimate for you to go out to town meeting with. So with that, I'll open it up to questions. Hope I kept it short and sweet.
One minute early. I'll go down. Anybody want to start with any questions they might have?
The Jamaica Plain project was very interesting to me because it is very similar to what we're trying to accomplish here. However, this, if you've walked the site, there's, there are a lot of challenges, which I think we alluded earlier here. One of which, one of the biggest challenges is that there's a number of homes abutting the property.
Yeah.
But we'd like to see some kind of a hatch shell or, you know, some kind of a music venue in that park. So any, have you put any thought into that? I mean, just superficially or...
Well, ultimately, like I said, we let the community kind of guide the... How they want, you know, the neighbors are certainly going to have some input on that, how they want. But ultimately, we can, we can work with, you know, directing the music away. There, I've seen that's behind the Verizon building, that side. So if we project the music in the other direction and put some buffer planting in, that will help them a lot. I'm sure they're going to have a lot of input, and we want their input. We want everybody to be ultimately satisfied with what this is going to become. But it could be, this could be a structure we, at this point in the master plan, you know, we're dealing with diagrams and not so much forms. But we do have, we do have an architect that we've worked with in the past that designs very interesting structures that could, you know, do some baffling and that kind of thing to help prevent any sound moving over there. I mean, it's not like you're going to have a concert, you know, every day, maybe every weekend in the summer. There'd be a concert program. In Jamaica Pond, we have a bunch of guys that get together with fiddles and, you know, guitars and play on the benches, you know. It's joyous, you know. It's, you see crowds walking around the pond and they stop and they listen. And it could be that type of thing as well. Thank you. Yep, sure.
Dwight?
Based on the RFP, do you have any concerns with meeting the project schedule that was outlined?
No, we're seven, we're seven people. We anticipate this being a... The biggest concern I have is not much gets done between Thanksgiving and Christmas, so you lose a month. Things don't get rolling again till like mid-January. Everybody's back from vacation. So, you know, we're into October right now. Sometimes it takes a while to get a contract going. And but we can, we can, you know, we can conduct our community meetings maybe once a month or, you know. I like to have three. We like to do a site analysis in the beginning, get people familiarized with a project, get their input, and then do a couple of, two or three designs, get their feedback on those designs. I like A, I like B, I like this about C. And then synthesize everything together and look for everybody's consensus. So I think spring 2022 is reasonable.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, thank you. I got excited when I saw the Victorian ruin as well. Do you have, I didn't know where you were going to go with that. I didn't know if you had preserved part of it, but I like what you did with it. But do you have any experience or examples of where you've saved portions of the building?
Well, that one, actually, I don't have a slide of it, but we did, we saved... We made things that were part of the building, paving. But not, you mean, you mean in terms of architecturally?
Yes.
Well, that, we don't have an architect on the team, but I, through the conditions assessment, you know, we have Vertex who worked on that, and I believe they have an architect that did that work. What, we can work with them on identifying what can stay and what can go. And I think that's something that we open up for discussion, like, you know, what part of the building does the community like that, you know, they want to preserve? And then there's like the financial realities of, you know, it's almost more expensive to save, preserve a piece than it is to, you know...
Yes, raise it.
So we, we can present those options and look at numbers. Like I said, PCA has already done, I'm sorry, PMC have already done, you know, quite a bit of, they understand the building, I think. So we can, we can look at ways to preserve it. But we're a landscape architects. And I would bring on Vertex to help kind of identify what portions can be saved. It seems to me it's, you know, it's, they're not like little pavilion-type things that are coming off the building or whatever. It seems like a very rectangular... Yeah. So can I ask you a question? What, what, what do you, what would you like to save?
Well, it's really not asking it from a personal perspective. It's just that the idea of saving some portion of that building hasn't been ruled out.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, everything from a wall to the shell, you know, and then having it sort of open air inside.
That could possibly be. We, I did another project and I didn't bring in a visual example of it with me where it was in the city of Lawrence. We took an old warehouse. We left the walls and the steel beams that held the warehouse, the walls together. And we painted those bright red and then built a park inside the building. So it was open air. But that's a very urban condition, Lawrence.
Yeah.
So there might be ways to do it. It's kind of like, you know, I think we need to come to like what the town is comfortable or how much they're going to want to spend.
I just didn't know if they, if it goes that way, if you had done any...
Yeah, that, that I didn't think about putting into, it was, it was like, it's an older project, so I didn't include it. But it, I can, I can share pictures of that, you know, if you're interested in seeing what that looks like. It's pretty cool.
I'd be very interested in seeing that, yeah.
Okay, I'll shoot that over to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for the great presentation tonight.
Oh, you're welcome.
So I don't have any questions.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
And that is, the first one would be, how do you, you've done this for 30 years, you said. How do you balance the creative side of what you do with the engineering side about what you do? And when does one take the forefront and the other not? Or just how do you meld those?
Okay, that's like a philosophical question.
I've been, I've been known to ask those kind of questions.
No, it's a good question. We, you know, this is a puzzle. We, we, we have to identify what the problem is or what, what we're trying to solve. And that is getting everybody's input, the blue-sky thinking, what do you want here? Additional parking. There are some engineering reality, oops, sorry, some engineering realities of that. It creates more, you know, if we do it out of asphalt, it creates more impermeable area, which requires the need for stormwater, more stormwater management. And so we look at it like creatively, like is there another way to do this? Can we do it out of gravel so that it perme, you know, it permeates through the ground, infiltrates the stormwater? They go, they go hand in hand. And Vertex, the gentleman that's in our proposal that, that we're working with was formerly at another firm called Par Corporation. I don't know if you're familiar. They're out of Rhode Island. And we did a, you know, we did a nine-acre park in Plymouth. And we were, we were at the, we were doing the charettes together, basically. I mean, engineers love to design. We love to criticize their design sometimes, but like incorporate new things. But, you know, with that one, we're dealing with a coastal, a coastal park. We had all this, we had like 15 state permits we had to file. Coastal zone management wanted us to, they want, the engineer wanted to put a concrete wall up at the, along the coast to prevent storm action from destroying the park. Coastal zone management wanted a soft landscape solution. We ultimately very creatively worked together on that with what plantings withhold a major norreister. And I think we, we like to work collaboratively with our engineers. We, we find that they're very good at problem solving, but, you know, we'll, let's try this. There's a lot of, you know, the green infrastructure stuff is really exciting now for, even for landscape architects to do, you know, man-made wetlands and that type of thing. So I don't know if I...
You answered my question. I mean, the reason I ask is because while charettes can give you an idea of what, idealistically or from a conceptual point of view, what the townspeople are looking at, we eventually are looking for a firm who has vision and says, okay, this is the most aesthetic way to do that.
Right.
And yet the most engineering sound way to do this too.
Right, we're, we're going into this not looking at it as like this is, this is all we're going to do. We're looking at it like this is, this is going to be a project moving forward. And we're, we're going to design it realistically, creatively, and something that can be implemented.
So my next question is, I saw, as we looked over everybody's, not just yours, but everybody's, you're all landscape, you know, architects and landscape designers, artists licensed. And so there's lots of interesting gardens and they're beautiful and everything. And one of the things that struck me just as you were talking and I was looking through your list of projects is, is what kind of forethought is given to the fact of maintaining those? It's not like we have a horticulturist working in town that's going to maintain the gardens. The gentleman sitting behind you, his department, as the DPW director, is going to be the one who's going to be needing to maintain these. And so what kind of sensitivity and forethought is given to those?
It's, it's huge. Nothing is ever low maintenance, or no maintenance, I should say. We try to limit the maintenance and we do, we do work, like, that's what I said. We would like to coordinate with, with all the agencies and get their input. Will this work for you? A lot of times the DPW will have an engineering staff member, or maybe you're the engineer? Okay. So, you know, engineers can talk to engineers about, about the realities of it. But the maintenance, you know, we do work in a lot of wealthy towns and we do work in a lot of towns that, you know, don't have huge staffs and capacities. So, you know, in, in those situations, we keep it simple. You know, in Boston, we call it snow and mow and blow. You know, just mow the grass and blow the leaves and, and that's about all they can, they can handle, plowing, you know. We'll do materials that can be plowed. The...
I think we're looking for something a little, maybe more aesthetic than that, but obviously...
No, but that can be done very creatively, you know.
Fair enough.
It's, it's really the sense of creating, you know, just enlivening that space, like activating it somehow. And that can be through programming and that, that Pine Bank project is just a passive park, you know, most of the time. But people rent it for the, I mean, organizations, orchestras use it for their summer concert series. You know, the Emerald Necklace Conservancy does a lot of events there. You can pitch a tent, you know, you can get a tent there. We just did a, a park in Provincetown. The Bah Relief Park, it was restoring a memorial there. But they use, they use that lawn for Portuguese festival every year. And we had to design the space to fit their tent, which, which seems backwards, but they have a certain dimensions. But yes, the realities of, of maintenance are always, we do a lot of work with the city of Worcester and they say, no, we don't do this. This is how we do it.
So my next question is what, in towns where there may be, I'm not saying we're this town, but I'm just hypothetically saying there, that there are competing ideas about what should be done at a location. Not that I'm looking for you as, as the, you know, the landscape architect to resolve the problem. But how have, have you been faced with that situation? And in those situations, how have you at least been part of the solution in helping resolve those tensions?
It's, the way that I help, I mean, like I said, the community meetings are where we, where we, we just get down and dirty and like everybody shares whatever's on their mind. And we try to honor everybody's voice. The way that we've resolved situations where not everybody agreed is we had more meetings. We, we broke some people down and just so that, you know, everybody negotiates and gets what they want. But they don't get everything that they want, but that, that's basically life, right? Like you get mostly what you want and maybe let somebody else get what they want, you know. And so I think, I think that's part of the, you know, the beauty of just letting everybody. And, you know, we don't always want to hear, oh, that looks great, you know. We want to hear, well, you know, there, I live right next to this park. I don't want a bunch of people like hanging out near my property, you know, that kind of thing. It's like, okay, well, let, let's try to address that.
So last question is, now that you've presented all this, we've read this. If you had to put it in a nutshell in a couple of sentences, what are your absolute strengths that would make you the right firm for this job?
I think it's, it's our experience and working with, I don't know how many municipalities we've worked with, but, you know, 30, 40, you know, since 2002. When it comes to build the project, we have the experience for publicly bid projects, we understand the procurement process, we understand, we understand how to design our, you know, when it, if it ever gets to the stage of building this, how to design our construction documents so that a low bidder doesn't come in and change order everything to get back to the accurate number. And we manage, we manage the projects very tightly. My experience, we get a little bit of sense of history here, I'm very much historic preservationist, to your point, if we could save part of the building, that would be great. You know, we've done a lot of Olmsted projects in the past, and I think ultimately, my diverse background and, and kind of facilitating this conversation and getting to a design that everybody loves, I think is maybe what makes us a little bit unique, I mean, we just have been doing it for a long time, not saying that I might be the right fit, but, you know, we feel like this is a very exciting project. We didn't apply to the first, the first go around, I think we had the conversation, well, at least with Julie, that we didn't feel we could do, do the park justice with the, the budget that was set. We feel like now we have a, a good, a really good solid budget, and we can, you know, go hundred and ten percent, get you, get you a really beautiful park that, that will be on the map.
Excellent.
You're, are you guys, you're close to Fitchburg, pretty close?
Yeah, we're border to them, we're so close that we border them.
Okay, so we worked on Crocker Field.
Oh sure.
We worked on a plan for expanding the cemetery, the big cemetery that's out there, and Fitchburg, when we worked on it, it was Fitchburg State College, but now it's a university, so. So we, this is, you know, not too far from where, and we're working a lot in Worcester right now, so we're out here quite a bit. I will say too, that we're very interested in, there's another park proposal that, that, so, we're hoping we can tie everything together if we do get this, but that's for another conversation.
Right. Anybody else?
Yes. For the Lawrence Project, can you explain, like, so was the intent of that project from the initiation to, to preserve the building, and?
Well, it's a National Heritage Park there, which commemorates the, the manufacturing industrial revolution kind of thing, so this is, this is associated with a museum, it's a foreground to a museum, so, that idea came about, you know, they, they got a hold of this building, and, and they couldn't use it for anything, so. They said, let's make it, let's make it a park, so it became like a gateway to the museum, so people park their car, walk through the inside of an old factory building, and I had to go, I was, I was probably in my twenties at the time, I had to go measure stuff in this building, in this horrible, like, I didn't know what was in that, you know, what kind of toxic materials were in there, but I had to crawl in all sorts of places. But the result, I think was really, you have these brick walls, and then these, you know, bright red painted buttresses, you know, the, the, the red, it was just really stunning, and, and that's what, when you look up, you can, you know, how many times do you get to go in a building and, and see the, see the sky, so.
Definitely would love to see, I know you said you'd offer, I'd love to see images of that.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can share that.
Just follow up question, so as far as the consideration for budget during that process, was, what considerations were made with the design aspect?
It was such a long time ago that we really can't, like, I really can't, I mean, I think, I think, I can't remember, to be honest with you, it was, it was in, probably in the nineties, like thirty years ago, so. But the, the issue was, it was cheaper, they didn't wanna demolish the building, and they couldn't figure out what to, what to use it for, for programming, so, the idea was like, okay, let's, let's selectively demolish it, you know, and, and, and plant, plant trees and shrubs in there, and bench, put benches in there, and it's very small, you know, it's not like, it's not this big, this, this building is very small.
Can I follow up to Heather's question? So our primary school is a wood frame building, are you, were you talking about steel supports inside of that? Okay.
Yeah.
So what's left is kind of a steel structure?
No, well, brick, brick walls.
Brick facade.
Brick walls, and the, and the windows were all taken out, so you have the window openings at, you know, pedestrian level. And then steel beams that kind of tie the brick walls together structurally, and it was built in the, probably in the eighteen hundreds, that building.
Was the steel preexisting, or is that part of the design process?
No, that was all, the design was to make a, I mean, the big idea was to make a park inside of a building.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm not a structural engineer, I would rely on my experts to, to inform me on that, but if that was something that you wanted to pursue, you know, we're, we can put together as many options as, you know, that's the fun part, is coming up with the ideas, so.
Great, thank you.
Excellent, I thank you for your presentation, and your, you know, appearing here tonight to talk about the project.
So.
And all your input.
I'm gonna go, go listen to the Red Sox game.
There you go, alright.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Is the other friend here in person?
That's there, right there. Yeah.
Oh yeah, that's kind of exactly what I, almost exactly what I pictured.
That's pretty impressive, oh, cool.
Yeah.
Here.
Hand my phone.
I think I've been passed here.
Yeah.
All right.
I guess that's a pixel four, eh?
Get comfortable, take off your jacket, and then we're gonna, you're gonna be at the podium, because we need the microphone for the people at home on, watching on TV.
Down at Fall River, they got those murals and stuff.
Well, the, the.
That's, that's interesting.
The creative solution, like, that's interesting.
Does anyone need to take a break? You've been here sitting for a while.
Yeah, we, we have one member doing just that, so you have, you have time, don't rush.
Maybe hand out some of the bullets on our presentation, so.
Thank you.
I have four copies.
Thank you. Get a little more coffee. Multiple copies here.
Sorry.
This is not a zoning meeting, come on.
Okay. Staple, right, sir.
Excuse me?
How old is the town hall?
Oh, wow. It's.
Goes back to seventeen thirty, the, the top.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know exactly what part was the original, because it got moved a few times, and then when it was brought here, it was lifted up and they built a floor under it, which they did a lot of times back then, which I.
What's that?
We're not really allowed here.
There was a very interesting presentation given at the library a couple of years back on this, by.
Well, there's a barn on, there's a barn on Lancaster Ave, there's a barn on Lancaster Ave, they did that, they, they lifted it and they built a floor underneath it.
Yeah.
If you wanna see trees from the seventeen hundreds, they're in our basement, holding the building up.
That's what the wiring is attached to.
Yes.
It has the original Ben Franklin wiring system, you kites. Okay, so our last interview of the evening is from Landscape Architectural and Engineering Services, and represented by Elena Pascarella, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Land Design Collaborative.
Land Design Collaborative, okay, oh, there it is, okay, sorry.
Yep. My name is Elena Pascarella, I'm a licensed landscape architect, based in Rhode Island, and I'm gonna be working with Diane Sewell, who wasn't able to attend this evening. About a couple of years ago, we had a synergy, we were working on a number of projects together, so we decided to pool our resources into a collaborative, and we're both licensed in Massachusetts and Rhode Island. And we've worked on, well, Diane has thirty, over thirty years of experience, I, I'm getting on close to forty years of experience, I get a little uncomfortable when I, when I look at that number, but, no, we both enjoy our work, and you have the, the front slide that shows our team, and we also have Greg Roy on our team from Dillison Roy. I've worked on a number of projects with Dillison Roy, well, actually, when it was Ducharme and Dillis, and now Dillison Roy, working in conjunction with Tuck and Tuck Architects on a number of projects in the Stowe and Bolton area, so I am familiar with this area. And I also, as you can see from the three projects that we put on that first slide, illustrating prior experience, I've worked on public projects as well here in Massachusetts. And one which is fairly close by, the Concord Bell Memorial, although it's a small site, we took one corner of that very visible main street in downtown Concord, and worked very closely with the town of Concord and the Concord Rotary, through funding under a Community Preservation Act, and we, we renovated this, this one corner, redesigned, refurbished that one corner, so that they could take the bell from the USS Concord that was in the basement of their town hall, and put it on a, on a fitting memorial in, in that memorial square, so it's, it's right in, this corner was kind of run down, the pavement was pulling up, they had a busted light, a couple of busted benches. It was really an unattractive piece in that, in that main street area of Concord. And so we took that through, through the design process, working with various groups in the town, Public Works, Engineering, the Rotary, who were the primary stakeholders, and developed a design that everyone approved of, and then we put together construction documents, construction cost estimates, and then construction documents that went out to bid, and we did some construction oversight, and they had the memorial dedication on Veterans Day, I think it was two or three years ago now, that they did that. They're still adding a few pieces in the back, but we met all their goals and they were very happy with it, so it was certainly a reference for you. On a larger scale, projects that would be more in line with, with the size of the site that you have here, we've included a couple of projects in our proposal, one for Carousel Park in East Providence, where Diane worked very closely with the town of East Providence, Rhode Island, that was a few acres, taking it from a concept design through a number of stakeholder meetings and community meetings, developing a master plan, and developing construction documents for that. Diane and I worked together on this Marina and Fast Ferry facility for the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. That was a small site that is an existing fast ferry, it's a ferry that takes people down to Newport, Rhode Island, and back. The key components for this were addressing stormwater in a very natural way, we had to provide, with the engineers that we were working with, we had to provide a certain amount of parking for peak season, when that ferry is utilized quite a bit. But we also, because Rhode Island, like Massachusetts, has very stringent stormwater regulations, that you need to address the stormwater as much as possible at the point source, and doing it in as natural a way as possible, whether it's through vegetation, bio swales, or whatever, and so that, again, this was just a master plan that we did, they're still working on getting the funding for it, but we worked on a master plan with a number of visuals, as you can see, plan visuals and also renderings, so that the Department of Environmental Management would have a lot of graphic information to then apply for grant funding, to actually get, get the project built, and I presume that that's the situation that you'll be in with this project, you may wanna go for a Community Preservation Act grant, or some other sort of funding to, to begin to implement different phases of construction, and so the visuals are gonna be, be an important part of what we would provide as part of the design concept. And, and then just as an example on a project that I worked on, again, this was in Rhode Island, but it's in One Socket, just over the Massachusetts line, World War Two Memorial Park, which was a state park, and there were a lot of stakeholders involved with this, because we were designed, our client was the State of Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, but we were designing for the city of One Socket, because the DEM had made an agreement with the city to redo the park, and then hand it over to the city, and also give them a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year budget to maintain the park for the first five years. And this has basically become a regional facility, it not only services One Socket, but a lot of the communities surrounding that area because of the splash park, the playground, additional tennis courts, and a regulations competition level Little League field, so they, they now actually can hold Little League tournaments, which they do, they have regional tournaments every year. So just an example of the different size and scale of projects that both myself and Diane have, have worked on over the years, that, that we've been practicing as landscape architects, working as landscape architects. The next sheet showing our project approach. It, this is task one that we outlined in our proposal, research, site analysis, and developing design ideas. This was a very rural park in northern Rhode Island, in the community of Barville, which is a small community on the idea of Lunenburg. And they had an area around this site called Duck Pond, and they wanted to develop a series of trails around it, and so we went out and walked the site, again, with the DPW people, town selectmen, did a walk during the day, got their feedback in terms of what site elements they liked, what they wanted to see, they wanted a very low key development, nothing as, shall I say elaborate, as what you're considering, you want a, a shelter, you want a farmer's market, you, you want something that's a little more active. This was really much more of a passive design idea, because they wanted to really maintain that rural character, they wanted to keep it quiet for fishermen, for hikers, for people who just wanted to go picnic for the day. But we did have to look into options for getting vehicular access in there, providing parking, as the site was somewhat off the beaten track, not as close to, to the center of town as yours is, and so we walked the site with them, we put together a detailed site analysis, those numbers that you see on that map correlate to photographs that we had assembled and, and did sort of a mini written report, in terms of our thoughts about what could happen at the various locations along, along, around the pond and along the site. And then the next slide on the project approach, if we could have that one? Yeah. That shows one of our suggested concepts for the trail features, in terms of where we might have picnicking and fishing, trailheads, you know, things such as eroded banks that we needed, needed to address, what natural features could be asked. what natural features could be assets, what natural features needed to be mitigated, the erosion and things of that sort. And we did two conceptual concepts for them with estimates of probable construction cost and presented our ideas to the town at a public meeting. And then from that, in, we prepared a written report for them, and we would be doing the same for you as you had outlined, as we had outlined in our proposal, and as you had requested. So I know you wanted to limit it to ten minutes, and I'll do that and open it up to questions.
Okay. Mr. Marino.
Do you have any questions?
Mr. Dwyer.
I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
Mr. Franco.
I'm going to ask you the same question I asked the others. As you know, there may be interest in preserving some aspect of that old primary school building, in whatever, you know, whatever form is not determined yet, if at all. Do you have any experience or samples of work where you've incorporated or preserved portions of a building?
Well, the Carousel Park project that Diane had worked on, there is an historic, it's a wood frame structure, it's an historic Louvre carousel, Louvre, L-O-U-F-F, was one of the well-known designers for, for those old carousels. I, I don't know if you have any here in Massachusetts, but we had-
A sore subject, you don't want to mention, we, we, yes, we have one.
You had one and you got rid of it, uh-oh. Well, yeah, and we, we still have a few in, in Rhode Island, although I think there was one that someone in the city of Warwick, where I am, they had one and they got rid of it, so yeah. It's, it's a sore subject for a lot of communities, not just here. But yes, we've, you know, we've incorporated historic structures into projects. It would entail having, reviewing the Vertex Report again, and probably consulting with them to see which components of that building could, could remain, if anything. You know, do you, do you leave just outside walls and, you know, put a diff, you know, leave it open, or do you put a, some type of a roof structure over the top of it? You know, it's a multi-story building, I, again, I, we'd have to review the, the Vertex Report in more detail and, and see what could potentially remain. It's sort of in an ideal location, if you left some of those walls, it would help to buffer some of those abutters that are nearby from, you know, kind of masks, some, some of the noises, shall we say, that might happen at the park at night if you have outdoor concerts and, and things of that sort. You know, outdoor activities, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, how, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Yeah.
I do appreciate the presentation. How big is the collaborative? You mentioned you and Diane, do you have other employees?
I have an individual who works part-time. He has a, he's a certified horticulturalist, and he also has a contractor's license, so he does a lot of our construction, my construction oversight work because he, and he does review drawings as well because of his contractor background. So making recommendations for, let's say, better ways to design something or put it together so that it's more constructible, more financially constructible, if you will. So we do, yeah.
All right, thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Talk to me a little about the balance, talk to me a little about the balance of the creativity of being a landscape architect and then against the restraints that a site provides, whether it has a structure like this case or not, or the, you know, the, the environmental concerns and how you work in that environment.
That's the design process, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a process of give and take all the time. You, you know, you just, you do a site analysis for a project and you see a certain number of things and you make note, and then you begin to get into the conceptual design and you start scratching your head a little bit and say, well, wait a minute, let's, let's go back and take, take a look at that area or those photos and how can this come into play, you know, if it's a low point, can you create a rain garden that's, that's really attractive and at the same time addresses stormwater management in a, in a natural way? So it, it's just a back and forth. Diane and I were at a meeting today because we've, we're involved in a project, again, in Rhode Island, at an historic park that was designed by Olmstead Brothers, and it's a beachfront site that our coastal areas are, are losing their shorelines. I mean, and we're looking at climate change and sea level rise, and we're trying to address, for the Department of Environmental Management, how to enhance this beachfront and think thirty years down the road when storm surge levels will be ten feet higher than what they are now. And so that's exactly what we were doing, looking at the engineering and looking at the environmental components and an historic carousel bill, shell of an historic carousel building that we need to keep intact. And how do we do that, how do we go about doing that? Again, we're still in conceptual design process, but a lot of tracing paper and overlays and, you know, putting, putting different ideas down and weighing it with other team members to come up with the best solution. And then, of course, you develop the two or three best, and you present those ideas to, to your public, to your stakeholders, and give them the rationale behind why you've, you've taken this approach, and then get their, their input from there, see, see how people respond to that.
On the, the project that had the carousel, was it a prerequisite going into the project that the town wanted to keep it? Okay, so that was, okay, so it was not, okay, we don't know what we want to do with it? They were very certain they wanted it?
That was, yeah.
Okay.
And the same one that we're working on now, this, this state park. I mean, you have historic preservation, you have Massachusetts Historical, you know, Commission that you have to review things with, and we have the State Historic Preservation Office that has jurisdiction over buildings that are, are historic and, you know, they will have a say in, I'm sure, as here in Massachusetts in terms of what, what happens. That school is historic, yes?
It is.
Is it on the National Register?
No.
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 No. I mean, historic, I guess, is a tricky word, when you say, is it historic?
Well, how old, it's over fifty-
The twenties.
Twenties, yeah, all right, so it's-
You don't know the exact date, but it's in the twenties, nineteen twenties.
I mean, there, there are a lot of elements that come into play, you know, it, what's the historic integrity of it, you know, what's the significance of it, it's-
Right, that's what I mean, so, but it's not, it's not on any historic register?
Yeah, it's not an historic district, so there, yeah.
I don't know, is it in historic, it is a historic district.
Because it's within the historic district of the town.
The building is not on the historic register.
National Register District here in downtown, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's, the building itself is not on the National-
On the National Register. So there, there will be some, some input regarding that, and I mean, that would be, that would be something we'd have to investigate further, and we would, you know, contact Massachusetts Historical Commission and see what, what their take is on it. Those are the kinds of things you do early on. That, that's what we're looking into in, in this project in, in Rhode Island that we're con-
We have a local, obviously a-
And you have a local-
Appointed historical commission too.
Yeah, as well, so-
And that building is in another, it's in a special district in the town, so it, it does fall within an architectural preservation district, so.
Yeah, so there are a number of factors that-
Yes.
That, that would have to be weighed in terms of what happens with the building. How much of it remains, does it all go away, I, I, you know, cost? Can you keep certain portions of it standing and not have it be a li, you know, a liability? Obviously, we'd have to, you know, look into the securing things structurally and that sort of, so.
So if, if you had to put in the shortest possible, you know, in a couple of sentences after all this, if you boiled down your whole proposal and your, all your history, why, like, what is the, is the one thing, the one quality that your collaborative has that would make you right for this job? Without, I mean, again, without rehashing all of this, but in your mind, the absolute strength?
I, I think you have two heads, Diane and my, and mine, and we have a lot of experience doing park projects of this sort, and we really enjoy doing it, these types of projects, and helping communities create usable community spaces from, from kind of a tabula rasa, if you will. Because, I mean, it is, it's kind of a clean slate, so.
One last question, you, and I don't know that it was hundred percent clear, so you and your partner have a collaborative, do you each work individually as well?
We do, yeah, on, we're, we're kind of merging slowly, shall we say.
So how do you choose which ones you're going to do collaboratively and which ones you're going to do individually?
Those that seem to be of interest to both of us, yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
I want to thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, thank you for inviting us, inviting me, and-
Thank you.
Pleasure, thank you very much.
Okay. So we left time to discuss this here, is it your intent that we would discuss this, this evening?
As far as next steps?
Well, as far as what we're going to do, we don't have a meeting next week.
Right, so as far as next steps, the board would, as part of the RFP process, the interview was part of the rating-
Right.
Process, so that would get, that would, after that, all the ratings are in, then we would open price proposals and weigh the two, price and non-price proposals.
Well, I guess, I guess my, my real question, my bottom-line question is, when is the earliest that we can make a determination who we're going to go with?
November 2nd.
Okay, all right, so there's no discussion tonight about these, we all get to weigh this? And you did the reference checks?
Julie did, yes.
Julie did, and so they're part of the score, you're going to prevent, you're going to provide the score that the, the combined?
Yes, I'll just need the scoring from the interviews for tonight.
Ah, okay, so everybody, if you could, and that's on a scale of, again, zero to four?
One to four.
One to four. So if everybody can, and one being-
Unacceptable.
Okay, so one being the lowest, four being the highest. Please provide in an email or at the end of the meeting, if you want, just tell the town manager, just so we know how you scored each of them. Any questions about that process?
No.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Interviews, we have a resignation of a reserve officer, Aaron Morielli.
Can we actually put Mr. Bernie?
We can put Mr. Bernie anywhere Mr. Bernie would like to be, where do you, where are we going to?
Well, he's here for, he's here for a few items, he's here for the vote on the 2020 representing plan from the town clerk.
Current business.
Traffic count and-
All right, well, let's take them one at a time.
Yeah.
Vote on the 2020 representing plan from the town clerk. Mr. Bernie, good evening.
Good evening, I brought visual aids.
All right, I like it.
So, I'll hide myself and, and you can see this. The top map here is our existing precincting map. The lower map is the proposed revisions using the 2020 numbers.
Census? I ask you why the top one is a draft then, if that's what we're working under and the bottom one is not a draft?
You know what, then it's backwards. The bottom one is the-
Existing one?
You know how I can tell, let me find where I am.
I said we can put you wherever you want, so.
It's funny, because I always vote in C, and I'm in D on both of these, so. So the bottom, yeah, so this is the, this is our existing map.
Okay.
And it's draft because that's what the census sent to us and said, here's your map and includes this fantabulation of where the population is.
Okay.
And what their goal is, as always, is to have things be as roughly equivalent as possible. So this map on the top creates a situation here where this is the largest district in A, or the largest precinct. We're using nomenclature I'm not used to, so I'm going to fumble all over it. And that's the area where we have a proposed massive population influx in the Howard Street project. So in looking at it with the town clerk and sort of kicking it back and forth, adjusting the precincts to be more equivalent takes the possibility of this district growing even larger than the other three and spreads that into a more equitable distribution through the precincts.
Do we do anything by precinct?
We don't.
So what, why the importance of making them equal, since everything we do is town-wide, every vote?
The, our instructions from the Census Bureau were, they should be as equivalent as possible without much variance beyond several percentage points.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Of course you may.
I thought there could be an eventual possibility to, as the town grew exponentially, that there could be two voting centers.
There could be, and I believe that's distinctly up to the-
Polling places?
Polling, yeah.
Okay, that still wouldn't, that's, I mean, yes, I, I could see that happening, but I don't think that still, unless we're going to divide votes by precinct, it still wouldn't change, I mean, someone explain other than whatever the reasoning is that the Census Bureau has.
Correct, and, you know, I, I also think that that's a town decision. I know that there are some larger communities that all poll at one individual location. I think also the idea is to, decade by decade, try and keep things as even as possible in the eventualities that the form of government were to change and you were in a place where you were doing counselors by geography.
You'd be prepared.
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. My personal favorite about this is that they have inexplicably changed all the colors from one to another, and so making it absolutely impossible to follow. But anyway, I mean, so what, what is our role in this? I mean, do, it, it, not that I have any reason to, 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 what do you call it?
You have to, you have to sign the descriptions of the precincts-
Okay.
As the chief elected officials.
And nothing, I mean, from, from the, at least visually, I guess on the fringes there's some roads that probably changed.
Yeah, you know, it's-
Like, I see that-
It's going to change what lines some people get in.
What is the, what is the northeast corner of the town, on the east side of Hickory Hills? What precinct is that?
So, this is D.
D, so I see D has been pushed westward on the northern part of Hickory Hills.
That's correct, that's correct, because this is-
I feel like I'm looking at, okay, what, what are the six differences between these two pictures?
Because this is a more dense-developed area, it's, and they don't, the, the challenge to this is you can't just say, okay, we're going to take these, this neighborhood, you have to take an entire census tract.
Okay.
So it's, it's shifting things in predefined blocks. It's, it's like a really high-level game of Tetris, because you're not only going with shape, you're going with content.
And I see that, I guess the Whalen District, what, which one is that, the B, the red? Yeah, so that one, that one is really encroached into, into D.
Correct, and, and C has, has shifted a little bit around through here. You'll see this line-
Yeah, it's a little bit, not much.
It's a little bit wonkier, but not, not too much.
I mean, anybody have any questions for Mr. Bernie?
No questions?
I would entertain a motion, do we, we need a vote, right?
Yes.
So, yes, it even says vote, maybe I should read that. Entertain a motion on accepting the representing plan from the town clerk as presented by Mr. Bernie.
I move to accept the 2020 representing, re-presenting plan from the town clerk and Mr. Bernie.
Have a second.
Second.
Well, any further discussion? Polls in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Traffic count requests.
So the town, through the MPO and the Monmouth Regional Planning Commission, is afforded the opportunity to make requests for traffic counting in areas that the Monmouth Regional Planning Commission and the MPO, or the Metropolitan Planning Organization, who- Planning Commission and the MPO, or the Metropolitan Planning Organization, who diverts, diverts, uses federal funds to do traffic, traffic analysis, I guess they do divert them, but it's not really in that nefarious way. And, so they have a four-year program where they count predetermined places every four years, these tend to be major roads, Lancaster, Leominster, Leominster Shirley Road, Mass Ave, but every year we're permitted to make requests for up to four additional locations, the planning board has asked that I submit requests to have the Howard Street area counted, both east and west of the proposed Pondview Commons site, as well as south of Howard Street on both Townsend, West Townsend Road and New West Townsend Road, in order to create a baseline traffic for the existing condition, in the eventuality that it is looked at as a development site, we have existing numbers that are not reliant on the developers' traffic engineers.
When would these studies be done?
If, if and when they, they agree to do them, when, when they have the opportunity, they could be done?
Oh, okay, so it's not, we're not, we're submitting something that may happen?
Yeah, we're submitting a request, if they have the time, the staff, and, and the equipment. Generally, they, I mean, they could be done in time between now and when the snow flies, or in the spring.
Anybody, that was, was that a unanimous vote of the planning board, by the way?
Yes, it was, at least of the members that were there.
You know, the timing, there's a lot of variables when they do those traffic counts, you realize that, right?
Yes, there is.
And those, that equipment they use is not that reliable, I can tell you that, in 48 hours is definitely not enough time.
No, it's not.
I argued that with them for years.
It unfortunately is not the ideal situation, but it at least provides a place to begin.
I don't think so.
Well, if anything, I would say that we don't want a traffic study done for that area in the winter months, because that's when most people are likely to not be driving, we want people, we want to get the counts when people are driving.
But then you look at the summer, and people are invariably here and not here, and you're not dealing with school traffic, some parents aren't working as much, so, you know, time of year is, is important.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it in the summer either, I would do it in the fall or the spring.
And that's generally when they do a lot of their counting.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bernie on this?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Jeffries?
Out of curiosity, and I don't, this is to the town manager, is this normally something that comes before us, or is it something that you normally would approve?
It's been a while since, I think, any?
I was going to say, it's been probably two-plus years since we've made any requests, and I think the last ones were approved by the select board. I think it may have been early 2019, so, at least two full years.
I have no questions, I'm fine with those studies, I think they, reasonable basis for wanting them.
I am as well.
Okay, all right, so, do you need a vote of this? Do you need a vote for this?
Sure.
All right.
I need a signature of our chief elected official, so, if that requires a vote, absolutely.
Entertain a motion regarding the request from the planning board for the traffic counts on the roads described by Mr. Bernie.
I move we approve the traffic count requests from the planning board at the location described by Mr. Bernie.
For a second.
A second.
Well, any further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none.
I appreciate your support.
Is there any other items?
Yes, the four planning board articles.
I was going to ask you about that, okay, four, four planning board articles.
Would you like me to give you the quick rundown?
Yes, sure.
Sure, so?
So, hold on, let's?
Have we, have we gone to numbers, or are we still working with letters?
Yes, we should have numbers now.
Well?
No?
We have one article that was requested to be withdrawn.
Well, we can leave a hole if we want.
So, the numbers are going to change.
Okay, well, the numbers will change, okay, sorry.
Then I'll use letters, because I?
No, 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 no.
I don't have numbers.
We're going to, we'll use the numbers from what we have here.
Okay.
Let's put it that way, special meeting information, draft articles. Okay, so yours are on our sheets for tonight only, but they will be moved, are articles 16, 17, 18, and 19.
As long as I can start with the right number, so 16?
That's the one about type of districts.
I'm going to refer as the types of districts, yes, so, as you probably all remember, six years ago, we adopted the Village Center District, and four years ago, we deleted the Retail Commercial District, somehow that never translated into Section 3.1 of Chapter 250, so, this article is intended to strike Retail Commercial District, which we no longer have, and insert Village Center District, which we do have.
So, overall, you would consider this a housekeeping?
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
Well, not all, I guess you can make an argument that not all of them are.
All right, well, let's take them one at a time.
So, 17.
Water Supply Protection District.
That is correct, we received a request from the Water District to amend their water supply protection map, they recently amended their withdrawal permit with the DEP, and in doing so, they remapped their underground aquifer, in doing so, it created a, I'm going to call it a tumor, because that's kind of what it is, it's like a little bump on the west side of the line on Lancaster Ave, in the general vicinity of their wellfields. So, in order to meet their requirement, they needed to make a request that the town adopt this new map, planning board looked at it and said, well, this makes sense, so, this is an amendment to the district, because it adds a small portion of land to the Zone 3 within the residential district, doesn't necessarily drastically change what could be done there, and that area is generally already developed with houses and uses, so?
And it's identified by the Water District as the aquifer protection zone, so we're just referencing it, as part of our protection district.
Yes, I mean, if we did not adopt this alteration, we would only protect the water supply protection, the aquifer districts as they exist in the existing?
Right, so there would be a piece that would not be protected, it would be probably a good idea for us to protect all.
One would, one would agree with that, so, this just takes out the previous map reference and inserts the new map reference.
And presumably, they, you will have, or they will have provided two maps?
Yes, I did provide it with the?
Both maps, the current, the current one and the one proposed, hopefully.
Yes, I can, I can get the, the current one.
Okay.
And then?
Please, anybody on the board, if you have questions, or any of these, otherwise we're just going to keep going. Location of districts.
So, this is housekeeping that mirrors the previous article, so by adopting the new Water Supply Protection District, we alter our zoning map, and thus, we need to adopt a new zoning map, and, and that's what this does, it would, it would change the date of the zoning map to the date of town meeting that it's adopted, and it would alter the outline of the Water Supply Protection District to show the new boundaries.
What's, what's the impact on homes?
On existing homes?
Yeah, that are now going to be in this area.
They're, I would have to look at the bylaw, I don't think there's a major impact, there might be like a lot coverage requirement, but it's, it's, for residential, it's probably not at a point where the majority of homes would run into an impact, generally, when you see lot coverage on something like this, it's 50% or up in that range, and on a 40,000 square foot lot, which is our base lot size, and in that area, most of the lots are that size or larger, having 20,000 square feet of, of structure is going to be, you know, pretty, pretty high. So I can, I can look into that, and I can, I can reach out with an answer.
Okay, and 19 is lot area.
So, the planning board recently has had occasion to review several plans and proposals within the limited business residential district, one of those being an A&R plan, and in that process, it was realized that there's no lot size or frontage requirements that exist anywhere in the bylaw for the limited business residential, so the planning board felt that that was something we should correct, which makes sense, and the Retail Commercial happens to still be hanging around in that table, so, in order to correct that, we're looking at deleting Retail Commercial and replacing it with limited business residential, lot size is staying at 40,000, which is, again, our minimum lot size in every other district, except the residents being the outlying, those are 80,000, but, limited business residential is essentially the area from the edge of the village district down to the Chase Road intersection with Mass Ave, it's a district that's only several hundred feet deep, mainly composed of existing dwellings and businesses, so this will only have impact as it goes to people either dividing or redeveloping lots, keeping the 100-foot of frontage, which is in all of our districts except the industrial, and actually reducing the lot width to 100, because this area has a fair amount of narrower lots, and this would allow for the lots to remain rectangular, as opposed to sort of pie-shaped, or like a Tetris piece where they have the 100 feet of frontage, and then you have to find an extra 75 feet of width to create a building.
Okay, any questions about that?
No.
No.
I think that's fine, this is the last one of the evening, so make this a big fanfare, it should be a great presentation for this.
Yeah, hopefully everyone will be ready to leave by then.
Well, certainly after it, everybody will be ready to leave.
Well, hopefully they're not ready to leave beforehand.
Right, exactly, so, no, these are, anybody have any questions for Mr. Bernie, before, is that all, is there any other issues for Mr. Bernie?
No.
All right, always glad to take you out of turn.
At least not here, right?
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Adam.
That's my goal, thanks, guys, have a nice night.
Thank you, Adam.
Anybody else we need to take out of order, or me?
No.
Okay, so, resignation of Reserve Officer Erin Morioli, or Morioli.
Yes, I was notified by Chief Gamal that Reserve Officer Erin Morioli was resigning, and her schedule was so that she couldn't commit the time for the department, because she's a full-time police officer for the Pittsburgh State University.
Oh, already?
Yeah, and recently began a comfort dog program for them, so.
Give her a thanks for her service here in town. Resignation of PAC videographer Scott Finnegan.
Yes, and Scott recently found another job opportunity, so he has left employment,
Again, I thank him for his service, I know he covered a lot of things for PAC, and did a very good job, so thank you, Scott. Town manager report.
I'll start with the announcement of existing vacancies on boards and committees, there are two vacancies on the Architectural Preservation District Commission, two vacancies on the Commissioner of Trust Funds, multiple vacancies on the Economic Development Committee, one regular member vacancy, and two associate vacancies on the Green Communities Committee, one vacancy on the Personnel Committee, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals, anyone interested in serving on these commissions or boards can fill out a application form that can be found on our town website, and return them to the select board's office. Employment opportunities with the town, we currently have an assistant accountant position, part-time benefited position, a board committee clerk position, part-time non-benefited, digital services staff librarian, which is a part-time benefited position, assistant to the sewer business manager, which is a part-time, and to be voted on to be benefited position at the special town meeting, and multiple, sorry, couple public access videographer positions, which are part-time non-benefited positions, and the trash and recycling coordinator position, which is a grant-funded, part-time, non-benefited position, and information on all those positions can be found on the town website as well, under employment opportunities. Update on grants, our new IT consultant, Suzer IT, provided all the materials and written justification required to submit the Community Compact IT Grant, and I submitted the application last Wednesday for a total request for both school and town network infrastructure equipment in the amount of 188,000, anticipate the grant announcements will be made around the end of November. In regards to bids, we have a couple updates, the master plan bid process for the planning board has been put on hold after they received zero bids in August, after contacting the firms that took out the invitation for bids, firms said the existing allocation would not provide adequate funding for the production of the two elements sought under the bid of the eight that are required of a master plan, the planning board has submitted a capital request for additional funds that would complete the entire master plan, and that was submitted for the upcoming capital planning process, so for fiscal '23. The Land Use Director's research has indicated that when communities hire firms to complete the entire plan, the cost becomes more manageable due to the fact that the majority of the work is data collection and public input, and that is used throughout the plan, the same amount of data collection is required for one or eight elements. The Marshall Park RFP is due Wednesday, November 3rd, and that's all the updates on bids. Information regarding Unitil's proposed rate increase, Unitil filed an amendment to their original proposed winter basic service rate increase, which was effective December 1st, 2021, and goes until May 31st, 2022, with the DPU last week, that would split their total proposed increase between the winter rate and summer 2022 rate, comments to DPU were due by yesterday at 5:00 PM, I submitted a brief comment letter in opposition of the proposed rate increase, restating the impact that it would have on our residents, that are basic service rate payers under Unitil, and that even splitting this increase between the winter and summer rates would be detrimental for many people that are already on fixed incomes, I also expressed that there was insufficient time allowed for those wishing to comment, submit comments between the notice and the deadline for comments to DPU. I'm currently working with our municipal aggregation power broker and contacting all the eligible accounts about their ability to opt into the municipal aggregation program that is 11.21 cents per kilowatt. COVID-19 update, the weekly update from the Board of Health, and the total number of new cases reported as of October 9th was 58, and the current positivity rate for Lunenburg as of October, so this should be 9th, was 5.35%, and Halloween hours have already been announced, beginning of the, but they, Sunday, October 31st, 6:00 PM, and the special town meeting is Tuesday, November 16th, at 7:00 PM at the middle school, high school auditorium.
Questions for the town manager on the report?
No.
So, there's a slight decline in the COVID cases?
Yes, from, I think it was last week was?
Slight decline in the cases and a decline in the positivity rate, yes. Just to answer, because I saw that people on social media and around were questioning whether the board of, the select board would actually file a comment during the comment period for Unitil, at the time that it was given, we were notified on last Monday, and the comments had to be in by yesterday, so there was not any time to have, unless we called an emergency meeting, to draft a letter, so, there's no official select board letter, I don't know if anybody here on the board submitted a personal one, but that's why there's no official letter, I did talk with the town manager, and as she said, she put in her comment in opposition, but I will say that if they, DPU, when and if the DPU has hearings in the district about this, we will let people know, and then people can attend those, because I've attended many of those rate increase hearings and other kinds of hearings the DPU holds in the district, a lot of times it'll hold them in Pittsburgh, so, we'll keep people posted on that, but just to answer that one question for information I got. Okay, letters of, oh, business. Letters of support regarding House Bill one thirty and Senate Bill twenty-two hundred on the streaming video over public rights of way that was presented to us by Steve Walker, who was the chair of the PAC Committee. So, does anybody have any questions about anything that was presented or the requests from PAC or the legislation itself?
I don't have any questions. I have a comment.
Okay.
So, looking through what, the impact of this as explained last week, the impact of this is that there will be a five percent of the streaming costs are basically being, there's a five percent tax. The way that it reads is that ten percent of that goes towards the state's general coffers. That another, I think, let me get that right. One-fifth of that goes towards the state's general coffers, that's twenty percent. Two-fifths of it, or something along those lines, yeah, two-fifths of it goes into a fund that's going to give money back to municipalities. And then the last two-fifths of it, the impact, that would also be going to this fund. And there was a specific verbiage here that, I'm guessing it is referred to PACs, basically, but that would go to these local access channels and be distributed by population. So, I, I'm not in favor of this. I understand what PAC's presentation was about, what they're trying to do. I think the impact of this is that there will be a five percent tax on everyone's bills, because Comcast, in my opinion, isn't going to lose a penny. So, everyone gets a five percent tax on their streaming service bill, and the town gets back some proportion of that on a, based on population, which, when we think about what our population is compared to larger areas, cities and such, you know, I don't see that as being very equitable. I also understand that some cities have, you know, public Wi-Fi. And so, there's plenty of places around the Commonwealth, and there's also competition in terms of who you can have for Internet providers, whereas we have one option. So, I think the impact of this is that certain areas around the state, such as the cities where they can have Verizon or they can have Comcast, they can have multiple options, or they have a public utility, and so they don't pay anything. And then, so our citizens get a five percent tax, and we'll be lucky, in my opinion, if we get one percent of that back. So, I don't support general money going to the, I think that the state can raise money by raising taxes if they so choose, but I think this is just a creative way to get more money. So, I'm a no.
Any else? So, with the historical decrease of people on cable services and the increase in people going to streaming services and the reliance on most municipalities on public broadcasts, in fact, an increased presence on public broadcasts over the three potential channels, of which we have all three in Lunenburg, public, public access, educational and government. They were funded in a way through cable because when this all started, when the Telecommunications Act of, I think, nineteen seventy-four did that, or nineteen seventy-three, that's how these things were funded. But now, here we are fifty years later, and the funding mechanism is changing because people's uses are changing, because the Internet was never, well, there was no Internet in nineteen seventy-three of any public use, at least. And now, of course, it's ubiquitous and everybody carries multiple devices that have Internet connectivity. And if we're going to continue to be able to support cable, it makes sense to me that streaming video is kind of replacing cable video. I think that is a natural progression for myself. And I don't agree with certainly the numbers that Mr. Jeffries has. Certainly, we'll have some rate increase. It's hard to know what. But I want the legislation to go forward, and there'll be plenty of hearings by all interested parties. The companies themselves, the streaming companies themselves, and residents themselves, et cetera. But I think it provides a natural replacement to keep funding to public access channels. So, I am in favor of this and would like to have us sign it in support of the two legislations. Anybody else want to weigh in?
Sure. Personally, I agree with Chairman Alonso on this one. I think prior to, you know, getting involved in town politics, I didn't realize how many people actually watch and follow these public meetings and not just on our board, but on all the, all the boards in town. And I, I agree that it's changing, and I could foresee, you know, streaming become the norm in cable, you know, being phased out in the next ten or twenty years. And with that, you know, I think this is a reasonable way to, to maintain a mechanism for funding some of that public access that is valued in town. So, I'd be willing to sign a letter of support.
Any else? So, I would entertain a motion on us signing this, in signing these letters in, in support as requested by PAC.
I move we sign letters regarding House Bill one thirty and Senate Bill twenty-two hundred on streaming video over public rights away in support of PAC.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Four to one, it passes. Let's ask me to, Chairman, Chairman?
I'll have Elaine read them.
Okay, and then I will sign them. Okay. List of budget priorities to provide legislators for FY twenty-two state supplemental budget bill. Out in town manager.
So, typically, we put together a budget priority list for the next year's upcoming budget season for the state to consider for earmarks. So, that discussion will occur closer to sometime in January. That's when our legislators, they're actually not, weren't able to come in November as initially, I had the discussion with them last week over Zoom, requesting that they have a busy schedule right now with what's going on for bills and such. So, and they're requesting a January meeting with the board. This request pertains to the state's supplemental budget bill, which closes around mid-November. So, it, timing-wise, we would want to submit something now for that request in the hopes that it would get approved. Speaking with them about parameters as far as amounts, like, it would, should be no more than fifty thousand. And I reviewed the, our previous priority requests. They're well over that threshold, our projects. I reviewed the bond bill amounts. The only one that stands out was for forty thousand for the old primary school for a feasibility study and analysis. Possibly, we could, you know, amend that to do the hazardous materials abatement. We had done that survey. So, to make that as a request for the earmark for the state supplemental budget bill.
Do they indicate any feeling one way or another that they will be accepting supplemental earmark?
No. Yeah, it's a request, and we're, we're lucky if it makes it in.
Right. Okay.
But to be cognizant that, you know, our high-end threshold would be fifty thousand, that would, you know, especially given that they're freshman legislators.
Have we looked also, I mean, does anything on the, on the capital plan that went over this, earlier this evening with the Capital Planning Committee? Any of that qualify, or the project, well, those are projects. Don't we have anything in there that we could possibly make a priority?
In the fiscal twenty-three column?
Yeah.
You know, there, there could be, but we haven't vetted a lot of those projects.
And when do they need this by? Yesterday.
Yeah, I would assume, because, yeah, if they're going to be voting, vote for November, mid-November. Yeah, sooner than later.
To me, hazardous waste removal is always a good thing. We're going to have to be faced with it at one point or another anyway.
And there's still, you know, the opportunity for the fiscal twenty-three state budget to submit a list of earmarks when we have more time to review even the current capital projects or list.
So, we should probably put that on the list next week for the Capital Planning Committee to review and see, you know, looking, start looking at things that maybe we can flag for the next year. But that's not this request. I have no problem with putting that on if that's, if that's the only thing we have.
That's the only thing I would identify as something that we've discussed that is it also a need for that property.
Okay. Any questions?
Sounds good.
Do you need a vote from us, or you just need?
Vote never hurts.
Vote never hurts. So, do we, do, entertain a motion to put the?
There is no. Yeah, that's on the list.
Oh. So, this is, what would it be for? How much?
For, I would say, request fifty thousand. And with the hopes it would be, it may be less than that if we do get it.
Okay, so, I would move the, entertain a motion that we provide to our legislators for their FY twenty-two state supplemental budget bill, fifty thousand dollar request for hazardous waste removal at old, at the old primary?
Abatement.
Abatement, for the old primary school. Okay.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. It passes unanimously. Okay, the second highlight of the evening. We go through, these are our recommendations, right? We have to take votes on these things. Otherwise, our recommendations don't appear on the warrant. So, take a deep breath. Let's just go article by article, and we'll try to keep this moving. Do we have actual numbers for Article One?
Yes, that's in your Google Drive.
All right. And that is? Chart of changes to the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I can go through those. So, the Medicare town share portion, that budget, the last couple of years has, has not had sufficient funds in the budget because it's been level funded, so, but it's been covered by the group health insurance budget. So, proposing to make that adjustment now, knowing that's the...
Excuse me. I asked for this to be shared on Zoom. And for those of whom...
Thank you. Yep. Although we get the funny hunch, unless we Zoom this up on Zoom, this is not going to be seen. So, you may want to magnify some of this. TV is not a good way to share twelve-point-type numbers.
Bottom, bottom of the screen, right in the middle.
Is that good?
I, I'm not watching it on TV, so I can't, I can't tell.
Well, it's a full screen. It should be a full screen.
Right.
So, the Medicare, like I said, that budget, there hasn't been sufficient funds because that budget has been level funded, but has been covered the end of the year with the group of health insurance. So, proposing to make that adjustment now, knowing that's the projected amount needed for that line item. And that the group health insurance would cover that cost, transfer out of that line is, well, is covering some, an additional amounts needed. The town accountant line, that's for the assistant accountant, decrease the hours from twenty-four to thirty-two as our principal account clerk is retiring and this, the opportunity to transition to what's needed for that role in the future for succession planning and in the event the finance director or town accountant is out. The technology director is actually, it's not the technology director, it's the technology budget that's, I guess. So, that amount covers the two grants that we've applied for the ten thousand dollar Maya grant for the Microsoft Office three sixty-five in the event we don't receive that grant, as well as the town's portion for the Community Compact Network Infrastructure Grant, which we won't know about until the end of November, as well as the consultants' cost, which is covered mostly by the remaining salary line for the IT director. We needed approximately three thousand dollars more for that, to cover that cost. And lastly, the Monty Tech assessment decrease. We received that notification. It was forwarded around by twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So, the overall omnibus impact is thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. The other changes to the budget, which play into the bottom line, is revenues and expenses. On the expenditure side, the sewer enterprise is changing on the expenditure side by five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. The change in state assessments was an additional hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. We, the Article Two is for prior year expense for seven thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy cents. So, the total expenditure adjustments is one hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and seventy cents. Going down to the revenue adjustments, the change in sewer enterprise, to, for their budget amendment article was an additional ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-one cents from retained earnings. The cherry sheet number decreased on the revenue side by four thousand and one dollar. And we had a change in new growth for the positive for one hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars for a total revenue adjustment of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. So, that leaves a surplus of two hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-one cents.
All right. Anybody have any questions for the town manager on these adjustments?
No.
No.
Okay, so, these are the adjustments that are going to be made in reference to Article One. So, we will go through. Does anybody want to discuss Article One? If not, I would entertain a motion. Now, our recommendations, there's three recommendations. We recommend approval, we recommend disapproval, or we defer to town meeting. Those are the three choices we have. So, I would entertain a motion on Article One.
Move to approve.
To recommend approval.
Recommend approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. It passes unanimously. Article Two, so this is prior year expenses. So, we had that number. That number is seven thousand...
Seven thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars.
And what is it for again? Is it one, just one bill?
No, there were a total of four bills that were discovered recently by the finance director for Tyler Technologies. They were IT bills.
Okay. Okay. Entertain a motion regarding Article Two for that amount.
I move to recommend approval of Article Two.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. It passes unanimously. I'm not going to say discussion. If somebody has a discussion, jump in. Just trying to streamline this. Are we ready? Do we have anything to vote on? Have they, has the firefighters?
No, they have not given...
So, is it prudent to recommend approval without their signature yet, or should we?
I would defer.
Okay. So, we don't have the actual signed contract yet from the union, the firefighters' union, so I would, I would probably recommend, or I would move that we would defer that till town meeting, till we have the number.
Second.
Not the number, but the agreed, signed agreement.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, the Sewer Enterprise Fund... Okay, the Sewer Enterprise Fund transferring the amount, so what is the amount? You put that in your other thing, right?
I did, there was a revenue decrease and a, um, retained earnings increase, and that would cover the costs of, um, making the assistant to the sewer business manager a benefited position, moving from nineteen hours to twenty-four.
So what was the total number?
There is a chart within the Google Drive that shows the sewer enterprise budget.
All right, let's look at that, just wanna make sure that we see the numbers. All right, Sewer Enterprise Budget Amendment, so there, it's okay. So did everybody see that chart?
Yes.
Any questions about it? All right, I'm hearing none, then I would entertain a motion regarding Article Four.
I move to recommend approval of Article Four.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, it passes unanimously. Number Five. See if the town will vote of available sums of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents into the sewer capital reserve stabilization fund.
Move to recommend approval of Article Five.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, it passes unanimously. All right. This one is being requested to be pulled, Article Six, because there are some logistics about how legally this is being implemented, so the Board of Assessors needs to do some more work behind the scenes, and they've asked to have this pulled and hopefully will be on the annual town meeting of twenty-twenty-two.
Should we make a recommend?
Yes.
Should we make a recommendation to defer nonetheless?
No, 'cause it's gonna be pulled from the warrant.
Yeah, it's not even gonna be printed, yeah, it won't be printed. So now everything else would be an Article Less, but we're gonna go by this numbering for tonight, okay?
Got it.
Which should make it really interesting if people go back and listen to this, so. Um, so Article Seven, which is the town hearing, the interim report from the TC Building Design Committee.
I move to recommend approval of Article Seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, it passes unanimously. And we have, now, do we have this sum of money for Article Eight?
Twenty-three million, five hundred and seventy thousand.
Twenty-three million, five hundred and-
Seventy.
Seventy thousand, okay. So this is the, uh, the renovation, design renovating, furnishing and equipping T C Passio's building. So this is in the amount of, this, if this passed here, it would require a, um, it would, a det exclusion ballot, and it is in the amount of twenty-three million, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
I move to recommend disapproval of Article Eight.
Anybody?
I'll second, I have to hear the discussion.
Um, sure, so this is the renovation of the building, uh, and I think that based on, I think we can defer to town meeting because we don't have the number for this apples to apples. I think the expectation is that the number is going to be, um, the same or lower. And so with that, uh, I don't think it's prudent to, uh, renovate a sixty-nine-year-old building. Uh, I, I'm in favor of building a new one.
My feeling is, since we've agreed that eight and nine are tied together, and I'm not convinced we're gonna have all the information we need for eight or nine, that I think we should defer to town meeting personally.
I agree with Chairman Alonso.
Then I withdraw my motion, and, uh, I move to defer to town meeting.
I have a second for that. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. We have deferred unanimously. So Article Nine, I would probably recommend the same thing personally.
I'd like to discuss Article Nine.
Sure.
Um, so there's, I'd like to recommend two changes to this article. So the first is to the dollar amount, uh, to increase that from three, two fifty to three fifty, and the second is to delete, bid preparation for construction. So to explain that, um, what's, what's happened in, in the intervening time is reaching out to the design architect to get a solid number here on, uh, what this next phase of design will cost. Initially, when we went through this process for the TCP renovation, uh, we were going off the numbers that were in the, I believe it was the TAPE, uh, and, and so the cost for the building was lower, and so the numbers were related to that cost. Um, we're looking at, now that we know that this building's going to be seventeen to twenty-three million, and that range is what I believe it will likely come out as, in the range of seventeen to twenty-three million, um, roughly the design development, uh, cost or quote that we received, uh, at a ten, so let me step back. They look at the full design project, they come up with ten percent, and that's usually, uh, how the architects like to, um, plan it. Now, real world is that the number really comes in somewhere between five and eight percent, seven, eight's more normal. Uh, when we did this with the design company previously, that, that percentage was eight percent. So if we assume that there's a ten percent design, overall design fee, and that's for every stage of the project, and you break that down into sections, what's the schematic, what's the design development, that you end up at a cost of about three fifty for the design development phase. So I'm moving to amend Article Nine to delete the, um, the number two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and insert the number three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and to delete the phrase, uh, comma, and bid preparation for construction.
Can we, if I may, can we split this into two votes? Can we do the two things individually?
Sure.
Because I personally have no problem with removing bid, big preparation for construction. Um, and, but having seen what the, the architects and the engineers have provided for the number, I don't, I haven't seen anything that they are providing that number of three hundred and fifty, I think that's being calculated outside of any bid that I've seen. And I don't feel comfortable putting in a number there, or certainly, we could put in a number, but, I mean, it's, seems to be artificial that we're just making up a number. Like, we don't have a bid that actually says, somebody actually from an engineering company said, this is what this is going to cost, because it seems like it's a lot larger from what we saw.
Yeah, so the, the designed, the design development number that we did get was three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Um, there, there's a question about the, there's a question about the schematic, um, part of the process, you know, and I think that there's, there needs to be more engagement there, but again, there, that's a ten percent assumption, and, and I think that the, we're going with eight, eight percent. So I, I will make the motion then to, uh, for Article Nine, to amend Article Nine to delete, to delete comma and bid preparation for construction.
I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Moreno.
All right, can we discuss it more?
Yeah, yeah, that's, it looks like you wanted to say something, so.
Why don't you just change two hundred and fifty to an amount of money? Can you do that?
No.
No.
No, anything that, anything that involves money on town meeting floor has to have an amount.
All right, second question.
Right?
No.
No, hold on, hold on.
No, it can be a sum of money. The article can be worded a sum of money.
Wow, okay, so this is-
The motion needs the dollar amount.
Right, okay, but, okay, but that's my point. My point is, when, when the, when the, when the article is moved, we need a dollar amount.
Can you-
And if we're printing something that says a dollar amount, a sum of money that's not in the warrant, I, again, psychologically, it gets people prepared, like, what, you don't even, like, it's, you're printing this two weeks before town meeting, or three weeks before town meeting, and you don't know what the month, the amount is, that-
So, you almost answered my second question then. Can that be amended on the floor?
Sure, well, it can be amended lower.
Oh, not higher.
It can't be amended higher.
It would be within the scope of the article, and to, higher would be outside the scope of it.
Okay, right.
So, uh, with, within the, the state's procurement process, there's, you know, the five steps of how you build a building, um, you know, design, excuse me, schematic design, design development, uh, construction documents, uh, bidding, and then construction itself. So, you know, there, there is some discussion that needs to be had, um, and, you know, we haven't, you know, we haven't procured bids for what this next phase would be, but we did submit a request to the architect for what the full cost would be, as well as a breakdown of each phase, and for the diva, design development phase, um, that portion was estimated at three hundred and forty-eight thousand, using a ten percent overall project number. So they're working, they seem to be working with this seventeen point four million dollar number, but they haven't officially given us a seventeen point four million dollar number. Uh, so I, what I'm asking is that we amend this to say three fifty, um, three hundred and fifty thousand, well, that's the second part. So when it comes to the bid preparation for construction, I, I think it's, um, the, there's gotta be overlap between every phase because of the questions that the residents need to know. So during the, during the design development, there's going to be some construction document type work done there, not, not construction document, fully work, but you have to answer some questions. You know, so there is a little bit of overlap, and that was also something that I think they were, they were projecting. So that's why I'm saying, let's remove this bid preparation for construction for easyology, because I think it's unlikely, um, that, I think it sends a message that is a little different than I think the one that we should, that, that I, that we should send.
Yeah, I think the bid construction documents severely jacks up the price, because it's a lot more involved, not only in timeframe, but also work. So I agree that we should remove that. So let's, we can, that's the first one motion on here. I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on just removing that part.
You know, personally, I think if we're just looking for them to do the design development phase, I think we should state that, that develop, you know, that, uh, engage them to, uh, complete the design development, uh, stage of, of engineering documents. Because final design services, that's, that's not included, that, to me, that's final design services is, you know, you're, you're getting into construction documents, so.
What was the wording that we used on the one that, the TCP is, this was it?
This was it.
Including construction documents?
Except for the and bid preparation for construction, that was the add-on, but everything else was what we, what we had.
Okay.
So this is the verbiage used for design development, that we use for devi, design development.
I'm not in this field, and I know-
Yeah, I mean, uh, I completely agree with take out bid preparation for construction, you know, um, we're gonna have a budget number in there, um, that I think's reasonable, that, that, uh, Mr. Jeffries has stated for design development documents, it does seem reasonable, that's probably, you know, somewhere around two thousand or twenty-five hundred hours of, of effort on, on the part of the design firm, um, which is, is, seems reasonable.
Okay, so on, so Mr. McJeffries made a motion, I didn't hear a second.
There was a second.
There was a second, oh, you did second it, okay. So then, any other questions about removing the N?
Bid preparation for construction.
Thank you, I didn't have it in front of me.
Yep.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, so that is removed.
I move to amend Article Nine to delete two hundred and fifty thousand and insert three hundred and fifty thousand in its place.
All right, I have a second.
I'm gonna second that for discussion. So my question is, my fourth question is, so now that, I mean, if you put it, so you said if it's, you can amend them, that figure down on the floor.
Right.
If you have to.
Yep, yes.
So if it's at three fifty, and it's, it's determined at that time that you don't need three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you can amend it down, right?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be prudent to do that?
Yeah, the only question is, that, the, the only question is, if you go, and that's the other case, if you go and you find out through the discussions that I'm assuming will, will continue, and it's higher, you can't make it higher.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't be able to make it higher, and therefore we wouldn't have enough money potentially to support an actual bid or an actual refined quote that we got. That's what you run the risk of.
Or, yeah, or the wording in the motion could be amended to specify that maybe it's-
Not to exceed.
Not, no, meaning, um, that it'll take you to a portion of design development or-
Yeah.
So forth, or-
Yeah, that gets tricky, sure, yeah. So.
So, you know-
The, the alternate argument, it'll, the town manager says you can put a sum of money and then put it in when we have it, but that's gonna make people raise an eyebrows, like, what, what do you mean, a sum of money? Like, I don't even know what the money, how can I prepare for town meeting if I don't even know what the money number is, so.
No, I, I've, I've, just as some background, I've, I've run, you know, we, this is, information, as you know, with the building stuff, it's, everything is still in motion, you're still in motion with a lot of this. So these numbers came in early, I, I actually ran down and met with Mr. Roy. You know, I think, you know, when you get a quote back from anyone, you always have questions about, you know, do they look at what you were looking for? Is this really, you know, the real number, 'cause, you know, and you try to work, you try to work with it. I think Greg and I both have the perspective that the three fifty for design development was a, was, was more common with, based on the percentages, and Mr. Roy is here. And based on the, uh, percentages that were, that they're using, which are a little higher, that it is within the realm of normal, but on the very high end of it. So I, I think that our expectation is that this number is not going to land at three fifty, uh, but that, you know, that would be the, the ceiling. And, you know, so that's why I think if, you know, given that this is looking, given that this money will be used to help get us to the spring, and which we can have a plan to bring before the town to move forward on another project, um, you know, I, my intent is to be sure that we're properly funding it.
So to be clear, the three fifty amount is based on the estimates that have been shared with you from the design firm, and they're basing their numbers on their, the total fees for design documents, uh, from conception through construction documents is roughly ten percent of the, that, that's what that number's, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and this is a fraction of that, Tim.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a question on this, um, actually, did, did Greg see what was going on on TV? He's throwing, I gotta get down there. This is, so, um, you're saying that you, they seem to be working with the seventeen million dollar figure, but that the project might be between seventeen and twenty-three million, so that means this ten percent i- is, could be bigger than one point seven million, and then the breakdown could be, for this phase of it, could be more than three fifty.
Correct.
So then three fifty might not be enough.
The, that's, that's correct in theory. Uh, I think that we're, we also, ten percent is not a common number. Um, you know, really, the number is usually five to eight percent. So we're going with a higher number, saying if this was the worst-case scenario, and, you know, what are we looking at, and then planning kind of for that. And right now, they're working, we haven't officially been given a number back, they're still working through that, but it seems that their number right now is seventeen point forty-three million.
Right. Okay, so, but what, what's, just walk me through this, 'cause I mean, you know, I'm new here, so, uh,
Yeah.
What happens if this number turns out to be insufficient? I mean, we just go back for more money?
No, no, I, I think that what you do is, you, you get, when you, you get as, you get as far as you can get with it. I mean, that's the bottom line. I mean, you know, they're, they're, the number that we have of three forty-eight, looking at a ten percent, looking at the certain building value, you know, that's how we land here. Now, you know, if this is more common, you know, like I said, if we think of what we've already done, we've used an eight percent figure. Um, again, five to eight is, is in the more common range. I think that what you do is you go out with an RFP and, and you say what you're, you know, you can word that RFP wherever you want to, uh, but it can include kind of a, this is what we're gonna pay the most, and this is what we're looking to get accomplished for that amount. Um, that's one approach, another approach is not to put in that dollar amount and see what these bids come back as, and then to negotiate and say, you know, we want, you know, let's take this off so we can meet our magic number.
Okay. Appreciate the explanation.
So the, the numbers I was, I was, that I saw regarding the schematic design and the design documents totaled in the amount of like six hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Correct, seven, I think that what they came back with was something along the lines of like seven hundred thousand dollars, and, and, and that would be for the, again, sometimes when you go through this process, you have- when you go through this process, you have to get questions, and, and there's a question of, you know, Mr. Dwyer just noted about thousands of hours of man-hours of how you're getting here. I think that, you know, Greg and I had a conversation about what's left in the schematic design phase. I think both of us kind of have this perception that, you know, we're probably looking at maybe ten to fifteen more hours. So we really are at a loss for whether, why this is being estimated at thousands of more hours when that is essentially what we've already done. That when, when you think about the phase we went through with the renovation project, you know, we have that schematic design. And if we recall that presentation a year and a half ago, it's a really kind of a basic layout of, this is what you can do. And it's the design development that we've been going through over the last, you know, really, that in, in the spring, but that was about a year-plus-long process in which they did a lot of that research to meet with different, it's a data gathering phase. So you're, you're meeting with the different people, you really understand the space needs, you're really drilling down exactly what those needs are during that design development phase, and then coordinating that based off your schematic design into a workable plan. So, you know, I think that there is a, there's a question on that, but of, of what it is that they're servicing. But again, these things are fluid. I'll be the, you know, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna borrow Mr. Passius's words here and say that, you know, I care about this passing, but I care about this also being, I care about the information being accurate and correct when we get to be able to vote on this. And if we don't, you know, have some more information, you know, we're about a month out. So we do have some time here to narrow this down and work on it. But if we don't have the good vision and we don't have a, a clear expectation of what these costs will actually be, then, then we, we vote to not, we vote to pass over the article. I mean, you know, that's, but if we, my concern is that if we don't, at this point, continue to move forward with this, so, and give us that other two weeks to gather more information, then we, we find ourselves at a loss.
Would you like to speak to this? I assume you didn't run up here just to look at us? I mean, I'm, I'm impressed of your arrival at ten o'clock, but, but one question before, before you comment on this, what I'd like to know is, from a layperson's point of view, can you explain the difference between schematic design and design documents, and what those two phases of the four phases? Then, of course, it's construction documents and construction administration.
Administration.
So, just talked about what the schematic design, what is schematic design?
Yeah. For everybody listening, I'm a civil engineer, not an architect, but I'll do the best I can with that question. And that's actually what I wanted to talk to, that's what I want to say. Schematic design is a step that you take to get, but that you, you need to land on before you get to design development phase. So schematic design is basically doing the work that is required to figure out what your program's gonna be, to figure out what's gonna be in the building, how much space we need to assign to all the different users, meeting with all the different stakeholders, meeting with the town manager, meeting with the planning office, meeting with the conservation office, meeting with everybody, the Lions Club, the school department, figuring out what you need, and getting to a schematic design, which is basically not a design that's coordinated across all the different trades, HVAC, structural, none of that's been done yet. You're just getting to an architectural plan of, this is basically what we want the building to look like, okay? You know, this is the square footages we want. And there's a lot of work that goes into that. Once you agree on a schematic design, and our committee did a lot of work to get to schematic design, you know, a year and a half ago. Once you get to schematic design, then you employ the services of mechanical, electrical, plumbing consultants to figure out what the specifics of the building systems are gonna be. You employ structural engineers, you start reaching out to your civil engineers to figure out what the external scope of work's gonna be, and you advance the schematic design drawings to design development phase, which gives you sort of an outline specification of what the systems of the building is gonna look like, which gets you to the point where you can get a reasonable cost estimate for this. A reasonable cost estimate that you'd be willing to go to town meeting for to get construction funding, right? So that's, that's sort of the difference between schematic design and design development. So what I wanted to say, and I appreciate the time, I had a couple of public hearings already at other town meetings, so I'm tired, and I apologize if I'm delirious. But I think what Michael Ray is suggesting here is that, is, is correct. We have, we just spent two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to go from zero, not quite zero, because we had some other studies with TAP and things, but to go from zero all the way through schematic design, all the way through to design development on the renovation of TCP. And that process included meetings with all the stakeholders. We don't need to do that again. It included existing condition surveys of the existing building. We don't need to do that again. That's all done. And we're, you know, if, if we decide that we want to do a new building, we wouldn't need existing condition survey of the building anyway, because we'd be demolishing it. It includes a site, like land surveying work that's already been done. So, you know, in talking, I did meet with Michael Ray this morning, and I, in talking with him, we both agreed that all of that work is done. There's probably some, you know, massaging that needs to happen with a new, with a new building, but to go back, I think it seems to me that the assumption was made that we'd be sort of starting over from zero, and I just don't think that that's the case. I don't think that's a valid assumption in this case, because we have a lot of data, a lot of time is put in. It's all presented in a four to five hundred-page document that they gave us as part of the two hundred and sixty-five thousand that they gave us. And a lot of that is usable. We're using it as an assumption for this, for this scope of work that we're doing, that we've been embarking on the last couple of months. And it can certainly be used as a starting point for design development, as, as we advance those drawings. So I just, I just wanted to give that.
Yeah. So I presume that, that would, that that would be true. There'd be a lot of information, obviously, that you could bring forward. My question would be to anybody who was involved in this, the, the company that we've asked to provide the numbers that they provided, were they aware that we have all this? I mean, so where did they get their numbers from? Like, how could the numbers be?
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand dollars off?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, that it's three hundred and something thousand dollars off. I, I, I think that when you go through this process, that you ask the question of, if you, you know, what would this, what will your cost be over the life of this project in each individual phase? And we got an answer to that. That, and I, I think that where we are at is that we don't need that schematic, we've already done it. And there may be, maybe ten or fifteen hours of components there that will transfer over into this, but nothing, not substantially anything more than that. Nothing to the magnitude of the value of someone's house.
We, we just did the entire process that we're talking about, that they presented in that, in the, in the correspondence that you reviewed. We did it for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That's the fact of the matter. We, you know, so I just, I just think that there's some assumptions being made there that are, that are not valid. You know, I just, you know, they may have had a different view of what the, the full value of the project was or something, but, you know, it can be done. It was done, in my view, very well. Oh, we got a very good document, and it can be used in the future.
No, I don't.
So, I think, no, no, and I'm, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be defensive.
My, my point is that I just, I'm, I'm trying to find out where the disconnect is, that we said to somebody, if you told somebody, hey, given all the work that I've done, and you put this virtual five hundred-page document, and you say, okay, now we're looking at new construction, how much is it gonna cost? And they give you a cost that's six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to do schematic design and design development, and you guys are saying, well, we don't need that. We need three hundred and fifty. That, we're not quibbling about quarters, right? We're quoting, we're quibbling about like two hundred thousand.
I don't think, I don't think it's.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So, one question I have is, we're talking about a new building here, and I know you've done space studies and evaluated the space we need, but one of the things that's done in schematic design is building layout. We don't have a layout yet.
You, you, well, you do, you just haven't seen it yet.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it, that's what, that's what this fifty-four thousand dollars has done. It's, it's sort of massaged the schematic, this is just Greg Roy's words, okay?
Right, right.
It's taken the schematic design that we prepared for the renovation of TCP, and it's put it into, it's, it's given it legs on what it could look like in a new building.
Okay.
And it's, it's remarkable. It, you know, the, the way they, they fit things together, I mean, it, it, when we're ready to share it, I think you'll all agree, it's a, it's a pretty nice flowing building. But that's, we're gonna be at that, that stage. Sure, we're at that stage. It's just a matter of getting the plan and ready to share it with people. So we're gonna have that.
So, my next question, is, is that gonna be a big thrust of the presentation that we, we see at special town meetings?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And November the second, when I would like to present for this, or, or show you the, go over the presentation for this article to this board, I will include that as an element of that as well.
Absolutely.
And we're coordinating together. I haven't mentioned this, because I haven't done a committee report yet, but I'm coordinating the presentation I'm working on with the TCP Design Committee, knowing that they're gonna go sequentially.
We're, we're currently, we meet tomorrow night, and we're currently working on that presentation, knowing that Mr. Jeffries needs it before his presentation to your committee. So, and that, you know, that plan's ready. We, we've, we've, we've approved it. The, the TCP Committee approved it so that they could get going on their cost estimating. We approved it conditional upon a couple of minor tweaks, so they're, you know, they're tweaking a few things, and we're, and then we're ready to sort of present that. But it's, that's gonna be, we're gonna have that floor plan that
Good.
Gives us that comparison. So I, I completely understand where you're coming from. I was kind of giving it, I kind of gave a little head scratcher when I met with Michael Ray this morning as well. I, I'm not, I mean, I'm in the industry, and I don't, I don't really, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing it. I just don't, I don't understand the disconnect. It does, just doesn't, the numbers don't add up. So I think that the numbers that you're talking about with the three hundred and fifty are, are reasonable. And, you know, I don't want to get too outside my, my purview, but I just wanted to give you a little explanation of that whole relationship between where we've been schematically, the schematic, the schematic design's done, as far as we're concerned, for all intents and purposes. And we don't need to go back and restart the, restart that.
Some, no, I'm not, I'm not. It's ten, it's ten twenty-five. I'm not even gonna go there. Okay.
That's fine.
I appreciate you coming in, Greg, and, and giving clarification.
Okay.
Thank you. And now I know what schematic design is.
Drive carefully. I'm very tired.
Okay, so was there a motion about this?
Yes.
And was there a, yeah, yeah, Mr. Marino seconded it. Okay. Any further discussion about this? So, all in favor of the motion to change, that replace two hundred and fifty and replace it with three fifty, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So now the article itself.
Because we deferred on Article eight, I'm, I'm still inclined to say we recommend approval of Article nine, but I don't think it makes a lot of sense if we defer Article eight for us to make a recommendation on Article nine. What are your, anyone else's thoughts?
I completely agree with that. These are, have been, in my mind, a couplet the entire time, and, and they have to be treated the same, the same way. So I, I think it should be deferred as well.
I'm taking you all three word on the information that's forthcoming, but because I haven't seen yet, I agree with the firm.
All right. I move to defer Article nine.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. It passes unanimously. Article ten, accepting, acquiring an easement on Lemester Shirley Road. This is for the Lunenburg Central Project. This is getting by eminent, gift purchase or eminent domain for future maintenance of and repairs to the roadway, utility maintenance for that project.
I would recommend approval.
Over a second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. It passes unanimously. Authorizing the select board to acquire by gift purchase eminent domain or otherwise temporary, permanent, and permanent utility easements along certain Flat Hill Road parcels. So we can construct the, this is for the Culvert?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is for the Culvert project that is under design and plan right now.
I move to recommend approval of Article eleven.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article twelve is amending the sewer service map area to include Marshall Park.
I move to recommend approval of Article twelve.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. It passes unanimously. Voting to transfer the care, custody, and control of a certain parcel known in nine seventy rear New West Townsend Road from the Select Board to the Conservation Commission. Again, this was, this should have been done at another meeting, but it was done.
Had the wrong parcel.
Had the wrong parcel identified. So basically, it's more of a housekeeping.
I recommend approval of Article thirteen.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay. Amending chapter seventy of the town's bylaws with the new salary admin plan with the new positions listed there.
I move to recommend approval of Article fourteen.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. It passes unanimously. Fifteen, the new modification to the demo delay bylaw as submitted by the Historical Commission.
Mr. Chair, I have discussion point on this one.
Yes.
We had agreed, and I think that this is probably inadvertent, but when looking at D one, so we have bona fide reasonable attempts have been made to sell, preserve, move, rehabilitate, or restore. And then...
Or relocate, you mean?
Yes. Right. And then we go down. Evidence shall include, and then we've got A, B, C, and D. And, and that doesn't make, we agreed last time that that does not make any sense, because the, the one up top is disjunctive with the or, and then this is conjunctive. Some of these wouldn't apply. If you only, in other words, if you satisfied the conditions, when Mr. McGrath was, was here, he said you wouldn't have to do everything that's listed in the preamble of number one. You could just do one or, or two of those things, but so then you wouldn't need to do all four of these things. See what I'm saying? Some of them would be inapplicable.
Correct. That was the, I think I may have asked that question, or you did. And so it's clear that the and at the end of C should be an or, not an and.
Or...
None of them have, none, none of them have anything except for the C. So A and B don't have anything either.
Well, that's okay, because you're doing A, B, C, or D.
Yep.
And do we have the power to actually amend this?
If we could. No. Well, I, well, yeah, you could argue that we should, but it's submitted by another body, so we should probably, you should probably take this discussion point and write it out and present it at town. We're not gonna, we're not gonna correct it tonight, because it's not our article.
Could you do something as simple as saying evidence shall include one or more of the following?
Yeah, or the, or, or the applicable right actions from among the following, or, or, you know, yeah.
Okay.
You know.
So you can defer it and then just amend it at town meeting?
Yeah, we would just amend the wording at town meeting.
To that, to that point, I mean, I, I thought that, you know, certain boards, like the Planning Board, we don't have a say of whether or not they get on the warrant, but we do have a say when it comes to the Historical Commission. So are we, I mean, are we sure we can't amend this?
It's not about we can't. I, I think we can. I'm less likely, I'm less inclined to do it, because I'd like their input on this. And, you know, so.
Doesn't D apply to all of those previous things under number one, though? Like, if it's asking for the name, address, contact information of the party or parties that have been located, and we've agreed to preserve, rehabilitate, restore, or relocate the building or structure.
Right. That is true. Right. That is true. It is just asking for the name and address of the contact information of the person who's agreed to do one of those things.
Is that me? Sorry. That's annoying.
Is that your bedtime reminder?
That was one of the, I have to, I wish, I'm going to get this on the recording. Is that me? That's really annoying. Absolutely going to record that.
I mean, I, I, I think that that's partially true, but not, because I'm, the only thing that, that, that list in D is missing is sell.
Sell.
And so it, because it doesn't say sell, it, it, you know.
I, I think, may, how about this first suggestion? I think that there's something, there is definitely still something problematic about the way this is worded. And I, I like the idea of deferring it to town meeting and then raising the issue there.
Yeah. And I certainly would, I would encourage you to contact the Historical Commission and, with your question directly and say, that part, I thought we, you know, I want to get clarification. So you can work with them on the wording so that everybody, I mean, we're all in agreement and I think we're just down to, okay, the mechanics of the grammar and, and the conjunction to be used. So.
Yes. Yeah.
So if you want to do that, and then we could just, this is not going to throw off anybody at town meeting to make a wording change that just.
Yeah. I don't, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with, to address Mr. Jeffries's idea though. I'm uncomfortable with the idea of our amending it and putting it there. They submitted it and they submitted it in a particular form.
Now, if we go back to last week's meeting in our drive and we look at what is listed in here as Article H, the wording here is different and the wording here is what we approved. So I'm in favor of the wording from our previous meeting being inserted into the article because that's what we discussed. Um, and it doesn't have this and or there. It has a period.
But we asked them to go back and, yes, change. We asked them to, to go back and change and make sure, are you saying and here? Or, or like where is it going? There was a whole discussion point about that. So this is what their, was this was their attempt, I'm assuming, at remedying and addressing that issue. Although it still has some ambiguousness.
Yes. Okay.
Ambiguity, I think is the word. Yes. Ambigosity.
I move we defer, uh, Article, uh, 15 until town meeting.
Second.
Do I have any, uh, I said no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. 16. Well, now we get to all of the, we can do them individually. These are all the ones that Mr. Bernie came in from the planning board, which most of them are housekeeping. So 16 takes out the reference to retail commercial district and substitutes village center district.
Are you willing to take these in, in bulk?
Yeah, we can bulk them. Sure.
All right. Um, 16, 17, 18.
And 19.
And 19.
Yep.
I move to recommend approval for Articles 16, 17, 18 and 19 as submitted by the planning board.
Second.
This one, because there's four, I will say any further discussion. All, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. That passes unanimously. So those are all our recommendations. All right. Yes. So we're going to, we're going to, in the, in the essence of time, does anybody, do we have warrants?
No.
No. And does anybody have the, I, we can go over committee reports. Well, we can do the minutes. Anybody have minutes? These are simple. So.
Uh, yeah, I actually would ask that we defer the minutes to next week. Uh, I, I'd like to, I didn't review them.
Okay. No, that's fine. All right. So we'll defer those to next week. Warrants? None. Action items?
I'll follow up with the town manager.
Committee reports. Mr. Marino, any committee reports?
Mr. Dwyer?
Uh, I attended a MJTC meeting, uh, on this past Wednesday. Uh, the next MJTC meeting is on, uh, November 10th. Um, discussion at that meeting. There was a presentation on the Safe Roots to School Program. Um, there was also a presentation on Complete Streets for the Town of Sterling. Um, those were the, the major highlights that were discussed.
Thank you. Mr. Franco?
I have none.
Mr. Jeffries?
Forgot what we were doing for a second.
I want, I want you to follow Mr. Roy home. Make sure you get home okay.
Yes. Might have Darlene come pick me up.
Mr. Jeffries?
Uh, TCP Design Committee met last Wednesday. They're meeting again this Wednesday. I think I mentioned earlier, uh, the kind of the key points there. Uh, Mr. Roy did it at least. So, um, we're working on a presentation for, for annual town meeting. Uh, the special, thank you, special town meeting. Uh, the intention is, is that, uh, we will go before the, um, Finance Committee coming up here on the 4th of November to represent that article, uh, in front of them.
And my committee report. So the Finance Committee had their public hearing for the, uh, for all the warrant articles you saw in, in our list tonight, all their recommendations. Uh, no surprise that the same two that took up our line share of our time tonight, took up their line share of their time. And they will be having, because the numbers aren't ready, they will be having a special public hearing for just those articles. And anything else they didn't have information for, it was one or two budget articles that town manager did not have article, uh, numbers for that she had.
Actually, one was the one that was withdrawn.
Oh, okay.
Um, so it will just be the TCP.
So it's the TCP Design Committee Public Hearing. All right.
Since I'm representing them and us, I think for both, that's going to be an interesting night.
Yes. Uh, and then tonight we had our meeting of the Capital Planning Committee. Uh, the first meeting post the submission of all the requests from the departments. We reviewed all the new ones with town manager and we set up an agenda that we will be meeting every Tuesday with the exception of special town meeting night and probably during the holidays we'll play those. Because our, our goal, or by necessity actually, by charter is that we have to get final list to town manager by middle of January or early to middle of January at the latest. So we have, working backwards and we'll start meeting with departments starting next Tuesday. And we'll be meeting at 5:30 for the next Tuesdays. All right. Uh, upcoming meeting, we have no select meeting next week. So the next meeting is November 2nd. We will have more information about these landscape architect firms and we will hopefully make a decision on them then. And then, uh, November 9th, and then of course the 16th is a special town meeting. Remember so far, it's still, it's still planned for next Thursday, the meeting with the Finance Committee regarding Chapter 70 at the, at the, uh, high school, middle school auditorium. Although now that legislators can't make it, they may make some adjustment. We don't know to that.
I haven't heard any update on that.
But anyway, it's still up for that. Any public comment from the public? Yes. Mr. Roy?
While I'm here, TCP is meeting tomorrow, the 20th, the 27th and the 3rd at 5:30. And they will be via Zoom. So any members of the public are welcome and we really would love to have public input. So please join, uh, to get informed or ask questions as you, uh, as you have. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And for those who don't know, those Zoom agendas are posted on the town website. Any public comment from the board? Good. End adjourn. Edit a moment to adjourn. A motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank God. All right, everybody. Have a great week. We will see you in two weeks. And until then, take care of yourselves. Take care of each other. Good night.
Good night.